Good evening, everyone. Calling to order, Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Hingham for November 27, 2018. First thing we're gonna do is approve minutes. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 20, 2018.
So moved. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment on items not on the record. Okay, looked up, I don't see anybody, so we'll get right to the first item on the agenda, and that would be The Fresh Market of Massachusetts. There's a request for a change of manager. And we do have somebody here, so, sir, if you'd like to go to the podium, just identify yourself.
John King, store manager of The Fresh Market.
Okay, what is it that you wish us to do, Mr. King?
What is it?
What is it that you wish us to do?
Change the name, for me to be on the liquor list?
Michelle, you had an opportunity to review the paperwork and satisfied that it's complete?
Yes, it's in order.
Okay, do my colleagues have any questions?
How long have you been with Fresh Market, sir?
I've been with the company eight years.
Eight years, and in the Hingham location?
The Hingham location, I originally started the Hingham location in 2010, then I moved away, opened a few stores in other states, and then I just moved back, I've been back about two months now.
Okay, welcome back.
Thanks.
And were you listed as the alcoholic beverages manager in any of those other locations?
Yes, in New Hampshire, they had beer and wine, and the New York stores, they had beer.
Okay, and this is beer, wine, and a small section of spirits, right?
Yes.
In The Fresh Market?
Yeah, very small.
Okay. No further questions from me?
Entertain a motion to approve the request of The Fresh Market Massachusetts, Inc., DBA, The Fresh Market, for a change of manager from Gerard Glover to John D. King, subject to the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Mr. King.
Thanks, Mr. King.
Thank you.
Run a tight ship down there, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda is the Town Pier Proposed Parking Plan. And if you will recall, ladies and gentlemen, we had a presentation by the town engineer, Roger Fernandez, accompanied by Thomas Covany, a member of the Harbor Development Committee. And some questions raised, and I've had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Fernandez this afternoon, I'm satisfied, as he's explained it, the dumpster has been removed from the plan, which I refer to as Alt 3A.
It's been affected.
Yeah, what's...
Well, as he's explained it to me by the phone this afternoon, the dumpster is being removed, and the harborment's little shack there is being placed in the position where the dumpster was formerly located. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and, I mean, I know this is gonna go through permitting, so, you know, my impression is they'd like to get the vehicles off of the pier, extend the walkway, we're picking up an incremental couple of spaces. So, I understand that corridor where the vehicles are going to be, you know, parallel to Otis Street, that sort of seems like a narrow alley when I'm driving in there right now, but I think Roger's presentation last night, that alley is more than adequate, so I'm good.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think the enhanced green space hopefully will enhance, I think the public's appreciation for the Iron Horse statue in the park. But I, like you, you know, I view us as sort of the gatekeepers to beginning the permitting process, I couldn't begin to, you know, sort of understand the intricacies of the parking placement there, but trust that the permitting boards are gonna do their thing and come up with a good plan. I also think that it seemed like an open question as to the dock at the far right corner, sort of the placement of that off the C-wall was a little bit up in the air, but again, you know, I think it's a good concept, and in viewing my role as a gatekeeper to the permitting process, I'm good to go.
Entertain a motion to authorize the town, well, before I get into that, does anybody want to add? Okay, I'll see. Motion to authorize the town administrator to advance the local and state permitting through the town administrator's office for Town Pier, also known as Victory Park, Iron Horse, based on the plans prepared by Beals and Thomas dated 11/27/18, and the Veterans Park plans prepared by Beals and Thomas dated 7/24/18, the former mobile station plans prepared by Beals and Thomas dated 7/24/18, the Barnes Wharf plans dated 10/5/18.
So moved. Second?
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And at this point in the evening, we're gonna start what we customarily do at this time of year, and that's the budget hearings. And...
For a little curveball match, you know?
Okay?
We're gonna do the town accountant first.
Great, just for, just as an outline, there's gonna be a few of them, so, first, we're gonna start with the town clerk, and then we're gonna go to...
Town accountant?
Oh, I'm sorry. Town accountant?
I'm the guinea pig.
Can you call a word on my phone?
Yeah.
Is that an article or...?
Yes. Well, it's a phone.
We're...
That was just too good to even learn.
You done?
Yeah.
All right. I'm gonna start with the town accountant, and move on to the reserve fund, debt service, insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, contributory retirement, Medicare, insurance, group insurance, and OPEB.
Can I ask, is the budget, are budget materials gonna be made available on the website? Like, how will people be able to access this if they wanna follow along? You know, like in your HIMNO?
I think like we, what we did last year is when advisory has their schedule, we'll put 'em on the advisory page. We'll put these on the advisory page.
Okay, is there a reason why we would?
We should be able to put this front section, I mean, the whole of this 335 page, but the front section is the summary of all...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can place that one there.
Yeah, okay. I just, I feel like if, I don't know, it's really hard to see it here, and, sorry.
And I'd actually, I think we've put the 330 pages of detail in the past on the website. I would continue doing that because there are some of us who like to look at all those numbers.
When and if Mary ever retires, she's gonna...
It's a snowy winter in New England, nothing to do. I just think for purposes of transparency, it's just all out there for people.
Okay. Since we just got the Masters today, we'll put it on the...
No secret sauce. All right.
Maybe it's your phone.
It's the Apple.
It's the Apple.
We made it past that.
There we go.
Okay. So we're gonna start on the town accountant's page. Okay, so, starting with the town accountant's budget, which is located at the front of your book, on page, the summary budget, on page, begins on page eight, DII, with the actual details, and start on page two. So the town accountants, total recommended is $266,000 for payroll, $11,355 for expenses, $71,500 for audit, for a total of $348,856. What we, we're doing things a little bit differently this year, we have a presentation available for the board and for the public to...
Okay, he's coming.
For the board and the public to get a better, I think, a better sense of what the board, of what these departments, the town departments do, for the budgets that are being requested and subsequent allocation each year. So, with that summary of the town accountant's budget, I'll ask town accountant Sue Nickerson to walk through the presentation and explanation of her department.
Okay, good evening. This is our very first year of doing this, so hopefully it flows well. The town accountant's office mission and services is, first, we manage weekly payroll and accounts payable warrants, both town and school. For the town, we do about approximately 400 weekly checks. For school, it's 400 weekly and 400 bi-weekly for teachers and administratives. Accounts payable warrants, the town usually puts in between 375 and 450 invoices per week. The school puts theirs in, and theirs is about 300 per week. The town accountant's office runs all checks for town and school. The town accountant's office also hosts the retirement office, so anybody who wants to retire, or when they come in on the retirement, they have to see my retirement administrator. We also coordinate the yearly audit for the town. The town accountant is the liaison to the audit committee. We prepare and submit the yearly CAFRA, which is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. We assist in the preparation of the town's yearly budget, liaison to the advisory committee. We submit all required forms to governmental agencies, and we manage the workers' comp and unemployment in our office. One thing I didn't write on this is, we also manage the South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center. We do their payroll, their accounts payable, and their general ledger. The next slide is benchmarks and metrics. The first, left-hand side, is all the governmental agency reporting requirements that the town accountant's office is required to do. For the IRS, we do the W-2s and the 1099s. For the Department of Revenue, I submit the tax recap, I certify free cash, we submit the Schedule A, which is basically everything that comes in and out of the town, we submit on a Schedule A, it is a comprehensive Excel spreadsheet. We do our quarterly taxes, and we have to submit all new employees to the Department of Revenue. For unemployment, we do quarterly wages. For PERAC, which is the Public Employee Retirement Administration Commission, that is for the retirement office, we have to submit a annual financial statement, we do the retirements, we add new employees, we do all transfer and withdrawals. The second half, on the right-hand side, is basically from the FY 2016 CAFRA awards.
CAFRA is...
CAFRA is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report that we submit every year for an award, excellence in financial reporting. Basically, 300, there are 351 municipalities in Massachusetts, only 41 municipalities received this award, and from 2006, Hingham has received it for 21. We also, we did get for 2017, so, and only three municipalities with more awards than The next slide is key initiatives for the town accountant's office for this fiscal year going forward. Forging working relationships with our new auditors. Munis upgrades and improvements, Munis is our computer software program. Continue training new employees in the accounting department. Within the last nine months, I have hired half my staff, three new employees. And review accounting records retention schedules. Next slide is how we do all this. The town accountant's office salaries of $266,001 is four full-time personnel, one town accountant, one staff accountant, one payroll administrator, one accounts payable specialist, and I have a one part-time personnel for a retirement administrative. And our expenses are $11,355, and the major item is $5,000 for conferences.
Okay, so, any questions on the accountant's budget?
I just, first of all, Sue, congratulations.
Thank you.
You know, you've been here for a very, for many of those awards, and, you know, when you look at the volume of work that goes through, and you look at the awards that Hingham receives, it's a testimony to the team. It sounded to me from some of those numbers like, on average, 1,500 checks get processed through your office every single week, 52 weeks of the year, in addition to all the other many responsibilities. Sue, the volume of that, has that, I mean, you know, five years ago, 10 years ago, has the volume changed?
I wouldn't say so.
Okay.
I wouldn't say so. I think it's consistent, 'cause I remember when I started, I was accounts payable, and there were a lot of invoices that we put in, so I would say it's, you know, with Shrek, we've added Shrek, so that portion, yes, that's all new.
Thank you.
Okay, so Sue manages, and her department managed several other budgets, and we can go rifle through those now if you'd like. The first is the reserve fund. The reserve fund, as you know, is the fund managed by the advisory committee, and it's there to help us with any unforeseen expenses during the course of a year. All expenses for that, that come out of that fund are done through an approval process through the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee. So, the department requested 200, or, excuse me, $580,000 for 2020. I've recommended an additional $31,500 to bring it to $611,500. That is to bring it in line with the financial policy of 0.75% of the annual...
Operating.
...operating budget. And that budget, if you need to see the breakout, is on page 17. It's a one-liner, though, so. The debt service, hold on, what do we have here? What do we have next? Debt service is on page 320, is that right?
Sue, while he's looking for that, can I just ask a quick question about the $5,000 for meetings and seminars? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So that was added in 19 and carried over to 20, that just seemed, that seems like the biggest expense item, as you pointed out. Is it like sort of continuing education-type training, or...
Yes, it was actually for when the previous town accountant went to the GFOA.
Yep.
Now I am going to, I went to the MMA program, and yes, that's gonna be continuing.
Okay.
Unfortunately, last couple of years with new personnel, I haven't really been able to do it.
Okay. But I am... Yeah, I mean, I think those kinds of things within reason are important to, you know, forging relationships across other municipalities and understanding best practices in other communities, and, you know, can only make us better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So the next budget is the debt service budget, found on page, Roman numeral 13, the summary, and the detail on page 320 in your budget book. The debt service, departmental request this year is $8,214,774, which is the same as my recommendation. That is down $532,487 from last year, or 6.09%.
And this is right off our debt schedule?
That's what I was gonna ask.
I would just direct my colleagues, if you look at Roman numeral 20, page Roman numeral 20, you can see the, not just the debt schedule, but you'll also see the debt service graphed against the financial policy, and while we knew, and right now, the FY 20 budgeted amount actually puts us back pretty much on target with the town financial policy. It's not unusual to see peaks and valleys, but as we've talked about, as debt starts to retire, that has the potential of creating some capacity. Unfortunately, the debt doesn't roll off. The capacity we create isn't always enough to fully absorb the debt service on projects that, new projects, but we are back on track with our financial policy, which is a good thing.
Was there some notion that we were gonna try to reserve for...
I was just, I was just gonna say something about that.
Sue!
Just wanna turn to 322, page 322, unused non-excluded debt capacity, and that is exactly what we are doing. We are, we level funded the non-excluded debt, and the difference between what we actually have to pay and what that level funded was, we are going to start reserving and putting it in, I believe we are going to start a...
Revolving fund?
A stabilization fund.
Stabilization fund.
And put it, put that money into the stabilization fund.
And that's also in conformance with the financial policy.
Yep. Do we devote a stabilization fund?
Once we establish, yes, we will have to have it voted to establish it. Right now, I'm gonna be reserving it, and you'll see that on my fund balance memo.
Okay.
Coming soon.
Okay. And so, Sue, the, just to confirm, the debt service that's right now in the budget is for just existing debt?
Yes.
To the extent that there would be a warrant article that would result in additional debt, that would be on top of what's here?
Well, if anything gets voted, we wouldn't go out to debt for at least a year or two.
Okay.
Okay.
So it would be reflected in the out-years in the forecast?
Yes.
With some potential, depending on when we go out, with some potential short-term debt in the interim?
It could be, yes.
Okay, the next budget is workers' compensation, also found on page, Roman numeral 14, for a summary, and with my recommendation, and with the detail, found on page 328 in the back of the book. The workers' compensation was recommended for 2020 at $330,000 with an additional request of $50,000. I've approved that, or recommended that, $50,000, and am forwarding to the board administrator recommendation of $380,000 for workers' compensation.
Workers' compensation is payment for job-related injuries. We have been going to the board since 2014 for reserve fund transfers for workers' comp, and that's why I asked for an additional 50.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next budget?
Question?
Yep.
How many people are out on comp?
How many people?
Out on comp? A dozen, something like that.
Yes, there are four of them. One is a legacy that we will be carrying, and we have two that are...
Is there any chance to settle the case?
We are in negotiations with two of them.
Yeah, it's a sensitive question in public, but it's, but, yeah, but we're aware of the expenses.
And we self-insure for this.
Yes.
Right, it's just this...
Yes.
Okay.
We do have a third-party administrator to help us with it, but yes, we are self-insured. And this is only town employees, police and fire have their own policy for Section 111F.
Say that again, the last part?
111F.
111F, okay.
4111F.
That's police and fire, public safety.
Oh, it will. Good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Unemployment, also found on Roman numeral 14, for the summary, with my recommendation, and then on page 330. So, unemployment, the departmental request was $30,000, which is this, I'm forwarding that same request as my recommended number of $30,000, which is a level fund from last year.
And we self-insure for our unemployment benefits as well?
We pay dollar for dollar.
Okay.
Okay. Next budget is the contributory retirement. That is also found on page 14, in the front of the, I almost said HIMNO, in the front of the, in the front of the budget book, and then on the page 327 in the back of your book for the detail. That is, let's see, contributory retirement. So, in FY 2020, the departmental request was $4,801,468, which is what my recommendation is. That is up a total of $299,424, or 6.65%.
And this is off our actual valuation. We just had our retirement valuation, actually, we just got the report this morning, and OPEB, we will be having Linda come in on December 11th for the OPEB valuation. The retirement number should not change.
Okay.
I am not sure about the OPEB.
And we're about two-thirds funded?
For retirement, we are 70.9.
Great.
Nine.
Okay.
And actually, we just voted on a schedule, we are decreasing our rate of return. PERAC is asking communities to lower their rate of return.
What are you lowering it to, Sue?
7.5.
And it's, it was 7.75?
Yes.
Yep. And we were at 7.75 when they were, they were giving guidance of eight, because we were...
Yes.
Not as optimistic.
Okay, the next budget is Medicare. Again, found on page 14, Roman numeral 14, and then on 331 in the book. The Medicare recommended, departmental recommended budget is $973,500, which is my recommendation, and that is a change of $88,500, up 10% from last year.
This is an area which is 1.45% of total salaries. Also included in that is money for police, outside police details, which we have to still pay. This has to be watched closely, because I, we just usually put in a 10% increase. I don't know all the salary budgets right now, so it might, might come down, I might ask for a little bump up.
So it's 1.45%?
1.45% of total salaries.
Okay, plus... 10% is just a proxy for what you think.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next is the insurance budget. This is property and liability insurance. The departmental request of $687,023, I forwarded as my recommendation as well, that is an increase of $32,715, or 5% increase over last year.
What's driving the increase?
Well, we had a two-year lock.
Okay.
3%.
It was 3%. I don't know what's gonna happen next year yet, so I, basically, it's just a conservative...
When, when is that premium established?
It is in July.
Of course.
Of course it is.
Do the claims made drive the premium costs?
Do what?
Claims made.
Yes, oh, yes, they do. And that's why we go to two-year lock, because we did have...
Good history.
Good history, so if this winter is pretty nice to the buildings, maybe the 5% will be only 3%.
What's the deductible limit?
There's all different.
Oh, depending on?
Yeah, vehicles have 1,000, buildings, I think, have 10.
Okay.
One of the things, just, you know, as, as we talk about buildings, I think we need to remember that, you know, sometimes we, we build a building to replace a building, and then we say, "Oh, let's not tear down that building, let's hang on to it, 'cause we might need it." I think we need to remember that there are not only operating and cost to maintain it, but, you know, there's also insurance here. And my hope would be that in the next year or so, as, as we're looking at, you know, perhaps, you know, making improvements to a lot of our buildings, I think at the same time, we wanna look at the buildings we have and just, you know, understand, do we need them all? Because every building we have, we're carrying, we're carrying insurance, we're keeping it up, so...
Yep. Good point. All right, the next budget is group insurance, also found on page... All right, the next budget is group insurance, also found on page roman numeral fourteen for the summary and then on page three twenty-five in the back of the book. The group insurance departmental request for 2020 was $6,856,021, which is what I am recommending as well. That is an increase of $623,275, $623,275, or a ten percent increase.
And this is our norm? This is how we start the budget process?
Yep.
With a ten percent increase?
Yep.
Over last, this year's budget? GIC won't establish rates until probably February.
Late January, February.
Yeah.
And we, we had that potential big liability last year, do we have any sense of where discussions are going at the GIC?
We're optimistic that it will be less than this, but it's very difficult to say.
Okay. You know, maybe it wasn't the rates, maybe they were, weren't they reducing the number of providers or something?
Yes, they, they changed all their providers and then they went back and, and let it go.
That was a nightmare.
And they were doing so without.
Was there any, was there any activity during the, like, I know they pulled back on it last year, but has there been any activity around picking that work back up again, or?
I have not heard of anything.
It was in election year this year, so.
Yeah.
Just saying.
But we'll hear more as the, as the months progress. We have Pat Harrington always, you know, at the meetings and he usually will let us know what's going on.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, we've got some.
Yes, we do.
And OPEB?
And just to let you know, twenty is our three-year anniversary on, on GIC, so we will have to make a decision.
To reevaluate.
In nineteen.
Okay. And, and the providers, I mean, we've, we've been with Mayflower, we've been with the GIC, are there other options for municipalities for group insurance?
We could.
Could self-insure?
Self-insure.
Self-insure.
That means a whole new department, with many people. If you went through claims, yes, you would need a claims.
And maybe into accounting.
It's out of my, it's out of my, it's out of my budget now, the human resource.
That's right, that's right.
But you would need a claims person and anything else. You could do a consortium with surrounding towns.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
Create a room, yeah.
Like a, like a Mayflower, there's, I mean, there's many different, you could just go straight to one provider.
And how do you, so if we need to begin to evaluate that in 2019, I don't, I wasn't part of the process, I don't think, the last time around when we moved to the GIC, so.
You would have to call the PEC group back.
That's what I was gonna ask, okay.
Yes, they would determine.
Okay.
I, I would just suggest with that three-year anniversary that we start that process soon enough because there are collective bargaining implications and we would wanna make sure that our union partners are aware of what's happening, feel like they have a voice in the process, and that we all give ourselves enough kinda time and runway to work, work through any issues, concerns, exploration of alternatives. Those things always seem to take longer, longer than we think they will.
Plus, I just think it's one of those things that hits people very personally, very quickly, and on a large scale, and so the, the sort of more lead times Mary suggests that we can give that kind of a process, I just think the, the better.
Change is very hard, especially with the insurance.
Especially with healthcare, yep.
And the next and last budget that Sue manages is OPEB or other post-employment benefits. The departmental request for OPEB for 2020 was $1,153,245, which is what I recommended, that's a $16,761 increase, or 1.47 percent increase.
And then, are we at the beginning of the process with this too? I just heard you say that we'll have the.
Yes, yes.
Person come in and certify the, or provide us with some actual, additional actual calculations?
Easy fuse.
Yeah, exactly, apparently not.
And I think on this one, we're, you know, we've, Linda has kinda given us a preview in the last few years that our, our, the annual required contribution, we are, we are probably low as are many communities, and so, you know, in conjunction with the advisory committee, we probably wanna have some discussion about, over what time period do we want to, to get in conformance? It, it may be a circumstance where doing it in one year is just too big of, too big of a leap, and, you know, Tom, it might also be useful as, as we start to have those conversations, reaching out to, you know, some of, some of your counterparts in other communities, 'cause we're all, you know, we're all dealing with this.
Yeah. No, that's fair. I can tell you that my experience is that Hingham is ahead, far ahead of the curve.
Far, far ahead.
But it's always a good idea to reach out to some of the others that are up there with us. Okay.
Thank you, Sue.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Sue.
Thanks, Sue. All right, the next budgets that we'll tackle in the evening will be Eileen McCracken and the town clerk and elections budgets.
Um, I think you know, um, Ed Watson is here from the bathing beach. I'm already recording, pick him first.
Sure, we can do that. Of course. Thank you, Eileen.
How do I negotiate?
Yeah. Don't wanna come up here, Eileen?
Michelle, how are we gonna do this?
Oh, we can scroll really fast through all of it. You want me to change it or next?
In the effort to be efficient, we built all these PowerPoints into one deck so that we would be able to scroll through, so. Michelle.
Best of the plans.
Look us up with that. Okay, so if you look at roman numeral. There it is, roman numeral thirteen. That's the summary, and then the, the detail will be available on page two eighty-five of your book. So the trustees of the bathing beach have a departmental request this year of $28,722. That is what I'm recommending. That is down $13,193, or 31.48 percent, and the reason for that is we are transferring, Michelle, help me, $13,000 and change to the DPW to manage the goose control, which is the process that has been in place for quite some time. However, the DPW director has asked that if he's going to be doing the control, that he'd be given the budget. And I've spoken with the trustees and they've agreed, so this is just a transfer of those dollars from one department to the department that will actually be doing the, the work.
They do that control from the bathing beach down to the Rotary, and it makes sense because we're not there in the springtime when they start doing it, that somebody from the DPW has to be down there.
Yep. You've, you've overall, I think, experienced much better consistency.
Before autumn rain this fall.
Yeah.
Because the rain washes the solution away.
Okay.
And there's a lot of standing water in the parking lot that the, that the geese use for drinking water naturally.
Yep.
So I was by there yesterday and there was a lot of it yesterday, more than I saw all summer, but it did work well in the summertime.
Yeah, we had a tough fall, for sure, yeah.
How did this past season go overall?
Good. It started off real, real well. The problem is at the end of the summer, most of the lifeguards are college students. There was only one high school student this year, and they go back to college mid-August. So it's all difficult having proper men on those last two, two weeks of August, but it, we did, we were able to have at least three lifeguards there.
And are you able to give us any sort of update on the snack shack construction?
Yes, it, it should be moving on the, the electrical circuit that the farmers market tied in.
Yeah, yeah.
Was disconnected.
Okay.
So that, it's gonna be moving on, hopefully, we're gonna be all set to go by the, the end of the springtime.
Okay, fantastic. And, you know, I just, I think you've, you've done a lot of work in conjunction with Roger and the Harbor Development Committee. The walkway looks beautiful.
It does.
You know, I think the berm has really filled in with sea grass, you know, I, I think you're seeing more families and actually, older folks, even older than me, down there. So I, I think you've, you've really done a nice job. I think you've partnered nicely with the, with the farmers market, I think in, in some ways that gets people down there and then they, they see what the resource is and they come back, so you've done it with, with a relatively small amount of money, you do a lot of work down there.
Right. And unfortunately, with the high tide, there've been some minor damage the last couple of days, but I'm certain the DPW can do that repair work.
Okay.
Yeah, I would just mention to the public, it's up there on the screen, but the annual budget for the trustees of the bathing beach is $29,000. That is $29,000, that works pretty hard for the town of Hingham.
Sure is.
And, and our thanks and appreciation to the trustees who, you know, have stewardship over that and hire the lifeguards and manage the Fourth of July and, and everything else that goes down there. I also appreciate the cooperation with the farmers market. They're so much now a part of the fabric of the community and appreciate the, the cooperation between the two groups.
Thanks.
Thanks, Ed.
Thanks a lot, Ed.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
Hey, now we will.
Oh, we had a question.
We had a question.
Yes, James? Ed, before you head out, just in case you need to field a response.
Yeah, it'd be a question. Jim Watson, two ninety-one Rockland Street. Very pleased to hear you're doing things to fill the gaps at the end of the season because there's so many good swimming days in June and September that we've missed because of the student lifeguards. And I thought I heard that you go to contract with the recreation department to supply the lifeguards over a longer season, or something like that.
We, we had some initial discussions with that. Would the operation of, of the pool, we thought maybe that would've been done by next year, but it looks like that's not gonna happen right now. So as of right now, we're keeping oversight ourselves with the lifeguards this year, but it's a possibility the future year after that.
Good. I really appreciate the, the effort because you miss half the season, you know, unavoidably.
Right.
I grew up in Wilson Beach with no lifeguards, so it never was an issue. You swam all the time, but it's really good to have them, it's very comforting, and so glad you're looking at that.
I'm an L Street Brownie, I went swimming today up in L.
Good for you, Ed.
With no lifeguards.
Thank you, Ed. Ms. McCracken? Okay.
Helped off as long as you could.
Nice try. So town clerk, Eileen McCracken, will present the town clerk's budgets and the budget and the elections budget. I'll give you the summaries on both and then there's a, a brief presentation to summarize the, the work that they do down there. So the town clerk's departmental request for 2020 was $206,765, which is the same as my recommendation. That is up $1,828, or 0.89 percent. And then the elections departmental request was $27,445, and with an additional request of $20,192, which I recommended, bringing the total administrator recommendation to $47,637. We'll get into the explanation for the additional request here and, as Eileen goes through her presentation. And there's, I'm sorry, the presentation begins on page seventy.
It's a nice try. How does this work?
Get this the right button.
Okay. Hi.
Hi, Eileen.
How are you tonight?
How you doing?
There we am.
Right now.
You were.
Okay, let's do this right, kids.
Okay.
Okay. So we have kind of a mixture online of both election and town clerk, so the first on the, the list is administrating of state and local elections, which is a lot of fun. So the town election is handled a little differently, I do all aspects of the election. The, I, we have to start right from the candidates, the nomination papers, they need fifty signatures, they come into the office, get the papers, they have forty-nine days, until forty-nine days before the election, they return them, the signatures are checked and, and the registrar is signing. From there, the ballots are set up and the candidates are under, put under each office. If there's an incumbent, they are listed first and then they're alphabetically. Info is sent to a printer and then they are sent as a proof to each of the candidates to check their out, if there's any errors. Twenty days before the town meeting and the election, we have a voter registration, and in the meantime, I'm just hanging around the office doing.
Wait a minute, what about those leash licenses you got?
It's on there.
Well, still, with, with the elections where I have to contact the schools, the DPW, the town custodians of the upcoming elections so that they can schedule them and we can make sure that we're, it's available for that day. We have to set up the machines the day before the election and we have to make sure we have all, enough ballots for all of the locations, and we transport the machines and other materials. At the end of the election, we, we have the tapes available for candidates and then we have tally sheets available later on. The information is then reported to the state, and then the, then the ballots have to be held for a year for a town election and then twenty-two months for a state election, so I need a lot of storage. So the next thing we do is vital records. The vital records, the births and deaths are handled through what we call the VIP system. What happens is that the information comes to us from, in the case of a birth certificate, it comes from the hospital. The hospital gives the information to us through this system, and then we, it goes to the, the state, the town where the child was born, and to the town of Hingham, if the parent is a, is a Hingham resident. So we have to transfer the information over and we print out a birth certificate and then they're available for the, for people to come in and get them. On the death certificates, it's similar. The, the funeral homes take care of that. They come from, first from the, the doctor's office or the hospital, wherever they may have died, and then they are passed on to us and we also transmit the information again there, and then the, the, the death certificate is available. Marriage licenses are more fun because the people actually come into the office, they sit in front of one of the, whoever is available to take care of them, and they give their information and then the information is transferred over to the marriage license and then the process, they have to wait three days, and then they, they pick it up, they have, it has to be sent back to us with the minister's information on it and then it becomes the record in our office.
Do you marry anybody?
I, I don't marry anybody. I don't want that responsibility.
Asking for a friend, or?
We also do licenses and permits, and it's a license, I guess you could call a business certificate is a type of a license. We, we do, I just lost my place. We also collect various violations. We do the building and fire and zoning, and we also do parking tickets, which are the most fun of all. And we, I am also the public records officer, we also do historical genealogy research, and we post the public meetings. And how they're handled is that we, they come to us either by email, if it's an outside group, they send the agenda to us and then we place it on the, the website. When it's in, one of the people inside the town hall, they place it on the website and then we, we just finish it off, we, we transfer some of the information over. Okay, that's enough of that. So the next is, these are the last few elections that we've had, and as you can see, town elections kinda don't make it as well as the big state elections. We had a, the town election that shows here in 2016 was also a state primary for a special state election, and so that, that, that was pretty good, and I think that that was the year that Paul ran. I'm trying to figure out who the different people are that ran on these, these times. the different people are that ran on these, these times. Yes. And then, and then we have the big presidential election, 14,853 people came from out of 17,402. Then the next town election was Karen's election. And Karen had, in that particular year, we had a lot of different offices that were, were running with people against them. So Karen, I think, had two people running against her that time. So because of that, there's more people that come out. And then next is Mary. And Mary did okay, too. And I don't think, I think you only had one other race when you ran this year, one or two maybe. Usually the school committee does have a race. In this last November election, we had 71 percent of the voters come out, which was great.
That's amazing.
And on the other side of the chart, I have on the average of how many of the vital records and whatever we do during the course of a week. So we're doing all of that as well as the elections and all of that. So...
So how, how has the early voting affected your staff and your organization and all of that for state elections?
I don't, you know, I'm, we have to get more people because the way that we handle it, we have the people available so that there's a computer, we can check them in and then somebody writes the envelope. I'm sure that the people could write their own envelope, but it's just that we know that we were getting the precinct on it and their address correct and all of that so that they can, then they just have to sign it and do the, fill out their ballot and then go off. But it's, we had, we spent a lot of money on the election this year.
Yeah.
So, but, but it was also good because we had, we had, I think it was 23 percent of the vote before we opened the doors for the election.
Well, I just, I mean, anecdotally, I heard all over town, wherever I was, you know, people really being appreciative that they could vote, they could vote early and that the hours really were pretty expansive.
Yes. I didn't, the hours weren't as long as the, in 16, I came in earlier than and it really, we didn't really get that many more people then, so.
So Eileen, with the hours for early voting, do you establish those for Hingham or are there guidelines from the state on like when they start, how many hours to offer?
We have to at least offer them during our business hours.
Okay.
And then they ask us if we will do an extra day like the Saturday.
Yep.
And so I extended the hours just a half an hour before.
Mm-hmm.
And that was it. And I think it worked out well. And you know, in the beginning, it doesn't, it has to catch on because people will start and they'll come and then they'll tell their neighbor that they did it and how great it was and all of that. So as time goes on, I think that we'll have more and more. We had, we had 3,707, I think it was this time. In 16, we had 6,067 or something like that. So it was, but that was a big election.
Big year, yeah.
And I know that this was a big election, too, but because it's usually the in-between elections or the midterms, we don't usually have as many people come out.
I just wonder, too, how it might correlate with potentially a decrease in absentee ballot, for instance. So, you know, for folks that are away that particular day or traveling or have business commitments or something else that would otherwise ask for an absentee ballot.
Right.
You know, perhaps this is affording them an opportunity to ask.
I think it did make a big difference there. The nice thing with the absentee ballots is that if they're, if anyone is overseas, they're able to do it via email. So that we can, we email them the ballot.
Oh, I didn't know that.
And then they email it back to us.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And they're, they have to be hand counted, but they're, they're still getting their ballot counted.
Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Which is, you know, it's very good for any...
Ballot's good, though. I mean, if it's obvious that somebody's won, do you still keep counting?
Well, the very interesting thing was...
Do all the ballots get counted?
All the ballots get counted if it's apparent that somebody's the clear winner.
We, we had early voting and we didn't finish putting the last ballot into the ballot box until 1:30 in the morning. We already knew everybody that ran and won, so it was, but we still have to count them all. It's, you know, you can't stop in the middle. Everybody wants their vote counted, so.
And is it, is the ballot counted that's received or is it postmarked? I mean, if you send out a ballot...
It says it's received, so it has to be received the day of the election. I think a lot of people think it is the postmark.
It's hard, yeah.
But actually, I'm sorry, for out of the country, military, something like that, is by postmark. And we wait 10 days after the election before we wait that.
Certify the results.
Yeah. So, and we didn't have any this year because people are able to do it by email, which is so much easier.
Yeah, that's fantastic.
It's just for military?
No, anybody. You mean for the overseas?
Overseas?
Overseas, it's everybody.
Okay.
Yeah. The other things that I have listed up above there is that we do the Bear Cove Park off-leash permits. We gave...
Key initiative.
Yes, a very key initiative.
Keep it up.
And we did, we just hit 399. I did the 399. So I, you know, I think that we thought it was going to be a lot more, but I think it's still good. Everybody's happy. So with all that wonderful work we do, we have, the salaries are $198,899 with two full-time personnel, myself and, I didn't turn up then, myself and my assistant. And then I have two part-time. I have one clerk that works 20 hours and another that works four and a half hours. And our expenses are $7,866. And our major expense is printing because I have to print both the ballots for the town election and also the census and that, and also for the court reporter. So, and, oh, for the elections, we have, we have several personnel and the, it's $12,650. And then the expenses are $14,795. And that's, a lot of that, it does say postage and printing and some of that also is the programming for the machines. And my next slide is...
Can you get new machines fairly recently?
Yes, yes.
And they're working well?
They are working well. The only thing is that they take longer to process and that's why it took us so long to do the, the early voting. When we had done the early voting in 16, we didn't have the new machines and they, they took them quicker. So that's why we were still working at 1:30 in the morning because it has to decide whether or not the ballot is okay. So it takes a little bit longer. So for the elections, when I was going over my budget with Tom, we were, we thought that instead of every year, my, I fluctuate with my elections. So every year, we would do like, one year I might have one election and next year two or three. It's usually, and it does go that way. So we had thought that maybe since the, the largest amount of elections we have is three, that we would work toward having every year three elections, that we would, we would not plan for or hope not that we have, but so that we would, and then whatever is, we don't use it, it would definitely go back into the budget. I'm not going to go shopping or anything.
So Eileen has situations where there are necessarily special elections that are unforeseen.
Right.
Until you're into the season and into the year. You know, a state elected official withdraws or leaves office or something to that effect.
That was like in 16, I had six elections.
I remember that.
Right.
It might be helpful to just get a sense for the last like five or six years of the number of elections. I, I see where you're going and that makes sense. At the same time, I think we need to understand that if we budget the funds, they're not available for other town services. And so I think, you know, there's a little bit of balancing that we have to do. So, you know, perhaps for the last like six or seven years, just how many elections we've had.
Especially, yep.
That might, that might help inform this.
Sure. I can do that.
Okay. That is Town Clerk and Elections.
Oh, can I just read one little thing what a Town Clerk is? Do you mind?
You have the floor, madam.
Thank you. The Town Clerk's office is the center of local government. The office conveys a lasting impression of the, to the community, to all who enter. The office is dedicated to the community, informative, patient, cheerful and compassionate, have the ability to listen, advise, receive new ideas and perform duties in a professional manner.
Check.
The customer should come in with a question or a need and should leave content. How's that?
Very nice.
Don't you love it?
You check all those budgets.
Yeah, you definitely do, Eileen.
And discreet.
And discreet. Oh, and discreet, yes. I thought you meant the way I was...
No, not that.
But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Eileen.
Okay.
So for the selectmen budgets, I'm going to ask Michelle to come over and join me over this table just so she and I aren't communicating across the way here.
Across the table.
You may want to send that...
It's helpful, I think, for the flow.
For the gentleman over here?
For the, for these like budgets.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah. You may want to position yourself.
Okay.
Okay. So the first budget in the, in the selectmen's section of this budget review, a budget hearings process, is the selectmen's budget. We are requesting, the departmental request this year was for $445,531 with an additional request of $40,000, which I am recommending, which moves the total departmental request to $485,531, which is a decrease of $61,947 or an 11.31 percent decrease. So what I'll do is I'll, I'm going to introduce each of these budgets as we go and Michelle will present and we'll answer as we have questions.
All right. So the first budget is our office, the selectmen's office and...
Page two in your books.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
And the presentation starts on page in the books.
What, page?
Page five.
Okay.
So our office is responsible for managing the day-to-day operations of the town, working with approximately 200 employees on the non-school side, including six unions across 23 departments and eight different buildings around town. We also provide support to the many elected and appointed officials across all of the boards, committees and commissions in town. And we implement, of course, policy decisions, working closely with the Board of Selectmen. Our office is also responsible for the annual budget that we're working on now, the town meeting warrant and the annual town reports. With Sharon and Sally's help, we also manage the licensing processes and requests, a lot of different citizen inquiries, public records requests and procurement processes for many of the departments in this building. We also liaise with the federal, state and local officials and help to coordinate litigation and legal services for the town. I have to say upfront that we couldn't do any of this without Sharon and Sally's request. We're really lucky to have the team that we have in the office. Tom's pretty good, too.
They're the ones that know. That way.
So some of the benchmarks that we look at in our office are, we like to call it our triple AAA bond rating, which is the highest rating that we have from the three major credit rating agencies. You can see on the chart below that, so of the communities in Massachusetts, that Moody's rates, there are only 14 who have a triple A rating. So we're really proud of that and work really hard to maintain that. We have strong financial indicators compared to other similar communities, including things like our unaside fund balance, low property tax rates and high collection of taxes. We also, as Sue mentioned, have received the award for our comprehensive annual financial report for many, many years. And we have worked hard to look for grant funding opportunities, receiving over $1 million in non-school grants last fiscal year. Some of the key initiatives that the selectmen's office are working on right now are listed here. You can see them. A few, we expect to hear back about the Green Communities Program shortly. We're about to start a personnel classification study for about 70 non-union positions. We're seeking out more grant writing, grant funding opportunities. And tomorrow, as many of you know, town hall will be closed to the public because we are doing, in conjunction with the police department, active shooter training and also town hall sort of organization and cleanup of our files, our attic spaces to try to take advantage of that time. Our office has four full-time personnel, the town administrator, assistant town administrator, office manager and administrative clerk, as well as the three selectmen. And our expense budget...
Yeah.
Who I like to point out is the three most important people.
Our expense budget this year is $59,140. I should point out that the human resources director through this year has been budgeted in the selectmen's office, but in FY '20, we're creating a new department. We're taking the full-time human resources director from the selectmen's office and the part-time benefits coordinator from accounting and merging them into a new department. So that is some of the reason why our overall budget has decreased this year.
That and solid fiscal management.
We also have one additional request this year that we are recommending, and this is for $40,000 for recording clerks. Our plan would be to hire four to six part-time recording clerks. This would help for folks to attend many of these board and commission meetings, help us make sure that the minutes are uniform and are posted to the website in a timely manner to increase compliance with the open meeting law. It will also help to reduce the burden on staff as well as the volunteers who are trying to keep up with these requirements of the open meeting law right now. And our estimate is based on, we sort of surveyed the boards and committees in towns, boards and committees in town, came up with a list of about 398 meetings per year that would require coverage and have estimated that at $20 per hour for a guaranteed four hours for the meeting and minutes, that's what we would, would allocate with an allowance for some meetings that run longer. There are about 25 to 30 other communities that our office reached out to to survey. They have similar types of positions with a pay range ranging from $13 to $31 per hour. Some do sort of flat rates per the meeting, for the meetings, but this, following the Attorney General's public body meeting minutes checklist, we'd really hope to increase posting the minutes in a timely manner and sort of reduce the burden and everyone trying to keep up with this.
So I would just jump in here and say that several months ago, the Hingham League of Women Voters, which is a wonderful organization, I'm, I'm a member of it, they, they, you know, pointed out that we, that it's important for us all to stay on top of minutes and that's, that's obviously one of the responsibilities. And when all town volunteers go through open meeting law training, it's, it's put out there. I understand that minute-taking is an additional commitment on many ways for volunteers. As a former secretary of the advisory committee, I did minutes on 47 meetings the year that I was secretary. Sometimes we had two and three meetings a week. And I guess as I'm, as I'm looking at this $108 million budget where at the end we always come down to a couple of hundred thousand dollars, I'd like to think that our collective efforts would not require this, this sort of a step and that $40,000 could be put to a better use for the public. And I understand, Tom and Michelle, you, you, you are responsible for compliance. That's one of the many hats that you wear and this is, this is one way to ensure compliance. To me, this would be a last resort because, you know, I, I'd like to think that, that on volunteer committees, you know, where you have five members, seven members, if everybody rotates and takes a month of a meeting, it's, I don't think it would be a big burden. You know, I, and my, I would wonder that if, if we did this, I'm just thinking that there might be boards and committees that would be interested in sort of jumping on this bandwagon and next year a $40,000 request is going to jump to 80 or $100,000. So I...
It's sort of just the opposite in some ways of like, you know, like we look at the elder services budget, for instance, and the budget is the budget, but then you look at the volunteer base that serves elder services and we can equate that to an FTE cost of whatever X is. And maybe this is a good... And maybe this is a good visual for, for the committees and commissions to see that, you know, that it is an obligation that they, that folks take on when they agree to serve on a committee or commission in Hingham. This is part of what the committee or commission has to do, and that if, if the volunteers don't undertake it, to your point, Mary, this is sort of the beginning cost to the town, and I would agree with you that it could be an increasing cost, and I guess I would argue, like you, that if we bear down on some of the perhaps less exciting tasks that we have before us, you know, we can redeploy this capital in a way that, you know, maybe, maybe produces more for the town. Like, you know, over the last several years, on and off, the Board of Selectmen's Office has asked for a grant writer, and in tough times, the grant writer gets nixed. But if you look a couple pages back on the grant amount...
Good times, too.
What'd you say?
Good times, too.
Good times, too. You know, the grant dollars you brought in, could, could we leverage that with, with, you know, with making resources available for somebody with that skill set? So, you know, I, I hear you, and I agree with you, Mary. If I were sitting in your seat and I had that responsibility, I think this is a very plausible and reasonable conclusion. I just, I guess I'd hope that, I'd hope we could encourage people to step up, and maybe we try to come up with a better communication plan to, you know, to make that happen.
And maybe this budget process will be a, a good trigger to have this conversation, because all of a sudden, we're starting to put a dollar value on this, and, you know, everybody who's a volunteer is a taxpayer, too, and, you know, Lord knows, we all have to say no to so many very worthy requests. I would think the taxpayers of Hingham would prefer $40,000. I think they could identify better uses, so maybe, maybe this'll jumpstart the conversation.
I have a comment. I've taken minutes at meetings that I've attended, 3A Task Force, South Hingham Working Group, and we've done the rotating thing that you talked about. I mean, there's, there's certainly pluses to that. The idea of a recording clerk, I mean, some people are just better at taking minutes than others, let's face it. And, you know, if, if you've got somebody that's doing it consistently, I think you get a better presentation of what happened at a meeting. So, I'm just getting this cold, so that's, that's kind of my reaction to it. I would, I would like to see that, I know some, I better not say. All right, thank you.
Well, I mean, you know, when, when, we've talked about this before, I think the recording clerk potentially has a larger role, to your point, to be educated on open, open meeting law and public, public, public records laws, and so for some of the, sort of, some of the, the less, less, lesser well-known committees, you know, it helps to have somebody who knows what the rules of the road are. So I, I get the compliance aspect of it. Question, I suppose, is going to come down to, you know, where we end up in this budget process.
Susan.
You volunteering to take minutes, Susan?
I'm not, I'm, I'm not a good minute taker, because I get too caught up in the discussion that's going on, and I forget to write things down, so Susan Murphy.
That's part of the problem.
Yeah. Real...
Can you introduce yourself, Susan?
I'm sorry, Susan Murphy, Levin Daly Road, also real estate counsel, former board member, planning board member. I, I see both sides of these issues, and I'm just wondering if there's a potential middle ground, because there are some committees where they are relaxed, and they have whatever they have on their agenda, they don't have a lot of audience or presentations going on, they're not making adjudicatory decisions, and they can be more relaxed and take the minutes and do that sort of thing. But I think it's also potentially, because I work with a lot of the boards...
Right.
...that have heavier workloads, some are better staff than others, and if you have a situation where you, there's one staff person who's at the meeting, they're responsible for getting all the information to the board members, running the meeting, like it's as if Tom was sitting here, having to explain the budget to you and take the minutes, like that, you know what I mean? That wouldn't really be very efficient. So what happens is the meetings get recorded, then that same staff person then has to spend a number of hours re-listening to the meeting they already sat through in order, I mean, it becomes very inefficient use of your staff time, and that causes delay. So I'm wondering if there may be another, you know, middle ground where certain boards that maybe have larger burdens, maybe lesser staff capacity, might benefit from this, either as a budget item, or within their own budgets, giving them a little more money to have that ability. So I, I'm just seeing it because I go to so many different board meetings, and I'm seeing what they're struggling with. But I hear what you're saying, that the committees that have less intense pressures should be able to manage it themselves. So that's just an observation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If Eileen says so.
If it must be so.
The record Eileen McCracken agrees.
Are there other questions?
Who'd have thought we bogged down on this, right? All right, let's keep moving.
Other questions on the selectmen's budget, or shall we move on to human resources?
Yeah, let's go to human resources.
So I'll give the, I'll give the...
Always want to talk some more.
I'll give the overview on here. So if, as Michelle mentioned earlier, human resources is a brand-new department this year. You'll notice, as Michelle noted in the selectmen's budget, we were down significant dollars, and that's because we're moving the HR Director position to this department, as well as retaking the part-time Benefits Coordinator from the Accountant's Budget and placing it also in this department. So, the human resources requested budget for FY 2020 was $133,900. And I will turn it over to Michelle to present.
The presentation in your book starts on page 13. I apologize, it's actually not in our slide deck, because we pulled it out of one of the other ones, so I'm sorry that it's not there. As I mentioned before, this is a new department in FY '20, new in the sense of organizational structure, not in the sense that we're hiring anyone new. So, the HR Director will be moved out of our office, which we think makes sense, because it can be a little bit uncomfortable for staff to walk right by the Town Administrator, the Assistant Town Administrator, our staff to talk about issues with HR. So we envision moving them into a different office space, so that there's more privacy there with the Benefits Coordinator. We are in the process right now of hiring a new HR Director who will hopefully start in January, overlapping with the current HR Director, who's set to retire, so hopefully we'll have that finalized in the next few weeks. This person will be managing and supervising the town's human resources function for the 200, approximately 200 non-school employees, and assisting the Personnel Board in administering the Personnel Bail Ob, and assisting with everything from the Position Classification and Wage Study that we're about to undertake, helping with employee recruitment. We have a number of key positions that we'll be recruiting for due to retirements in the next few years, training and orienting employees, assisting in collective bargaining and labor relations, and helping with civil service as well. This person will also handle a lot of confidential personnel files, and make sure that we are in compliance with all of the relevant labor, state, federal regulations. Working in coordination with the Benefits Coordinator, they'll also help over 1,100 employees, retirees, and their family members in enrolling and understanding the town's health, dental, and life insurance benefits. Some of the key initiatives that these two folks will be working on, well, first, we're just happy to announce that all six unions are currently under contract right now, so with help from the Personnel Board there, so that is something we won't have to look at right away. I mentioned the Wage and Classification Study. They'll also be implementing new OSHA guidelines and conducting conflict of interest training for all employees, including special municipal employees, as well as managing the open enrollment for benefits on a yearly basis. The salaries and expenses, as Tom mentioned, are $130,059 for the one full-time HR Director and the one part-time Benefits Coordinator, and their expenses are $3,350, with major items being for meetings and seminars and for dues.
What's the net increase, if you, if you looked at the costs, the embedded costs in the other budgets this year versus what you're asking for for next year?
So the salaries have basically stayed the same from the two offices we're budgeting at the current level. Expense-wise, we transferred some expenses from selectmen to the new HR office, but overall, it's about a $9,000 increase, mostly because of level service expenses in the selectmen's budget.
Okay. The next budget is the legal budget, and again, on Roman numeral, page Roman numeral eight at the bottom, and in your book, it is on page 60. The departmental request for legal services is $232,000. I am recommending an increase of $25,000 to bring the total administrator recommendation to $257,000, or a 10.78 percent increase.
The presentation can be found on page 61 in the books, right here. As you know, we have four main town council, our General Counsel, Real Estate, Susan Murphy, who's in the audience tonight, someone who focuses on personnel and collective bargaining, and then finally, a council focusing on litigation. As you can also see, we have the 10-year history here of what the legal services budget has been compared to the actual expenditures by the town, and as you can see, the budget-to-actual ratio has been decreasing over the last four years, so part of the reason for our additional request is to try to catch up there and bring the budget to a number that's more in line with the expenditures.
So we recognize that to try to catch up and to true this up in one given, one year is, is a little unnecessary, and I think would, would cause ripple effects throughout the rest of the budget. So what I'm recommending is a, is a...
Incremental.
An incremental approach to that. So that's why I'm recommending just a $25,000 increase this year. I would suggest that we do a very similar number each of the next several years to get to a more reasonable number, so that, you know, if the, if that ratio regularly reaches 80 percent, I think we'd be comfortable.
We're trying to...
Oh, go ahead.
We're trying to control our legal costs as much as possible, as much as we can foresee, doing things like asking our General Counsel to come to Town Hall every time we have a department head meeting, which is once a month, and having folks schedule in advance a time to meet with him, with the thought being that we can get out in front of some problems and address them more proactively during that scheduled time.
I was going to say, I think you, you both in particular have made great efforts to try to manage this moving target in a way that doesn't, I feel, compromise the delivery of, of legal services to the town. So, you know, I know you've, you have been, you created that form for council requests, you're monitoring outstanding matters, you're making council available proactively. You know, I, I think we've, we've said it before, when you're a $100 million-plus enterprise, with the numbers of sort of regulatory and statutory overlays that we have to comply with, plus, you know, a personnel-heavy operation, it, it requires some measure of legal dollars. And, you know, the other thing I'm going to say, and not just because Susan's sitting in the audience, you know, I, I feel like I always appreciated the contributions that are legal councils in the various capacities made to this town, but no more than I do now, sitting in these seats. I mean, we, we could not do this job without the kind of really high-caliber legal advice that we get in connection with the matters that, that come before us. So, you know, I think each and every member of that legal staff works really hard for this town.
And I would just add that if, if you look at FY '17 and FY '18, you know, I think what we sort of learned with legal is that, is that while there may be one or two issues in a given year that are kind of budget busters, while we may not have that specific event for another five years, we have something. And I would just point out that in FY '17 and '18, those were the times when we had, we had the 40B projects. We had Riverstone, we had Avalon, and we had Broadstone Bear Cove. And, you know, one of, one of the things that, as, as many of the butters and neighbors to Riverstone, you know, as, as they were urging the town to do what it could to protect and permit that project while still being in compliance with 40B, that takes a lot of time and a lot of work. Those are, those are efforts well, well worth it, but, you know, it would be my hope as well, that now that the town has, is at our, you know, is, is over the 10 percent with the subsidized housing inventory, that, that some of that activity will be behind us. I would also point out that, you know, when I joined the board, I first got an update on legal, and when we sat down on litigation, people don't realize sometimes, but litigation goes over a period of years. There are still some cases that the town is, is working on that, that have predated, you know, all three of us on this board. It's, it's the nature of litigation. Again, protecting the town's interest.
I'd echo that, too. I'm very comfortable with the lawyers that serve the town, and we've had the pleasure and privilege of benefiting from their wise counsel repeatedly over the time I've sat in this chair, so, for those of you who may not know who they are, Kerry Ryan's our litigation counsel, John Cofflin's our General Counsel, Susan Murphy's our real estate counsel, and Kevin Feely's our labor, and they all do an excellent job. So thank you.
Okay.
Keep her moving.
Next budget is on, you can find on Roman numeral 10, the summary page, with the detail sheet, starting on page 117, and the present budget beginning on page 120. The Town Hall, 2020 departmental request is for $652,267, which I am recommending. Has a total increase of $23,203, or a 3.69 percent increase over prior year.
So the presentation is just a one-pager on page 120. This budget includes three full-time and one part-time custodians who maintain, clean, and oversee repairs of Town Hall. Most of you know Jeff, Chris, and Horatio, and Herb is our part-time custodian, and we are really, really lucky to have this team. If I asked Jeff when that door handle was replaced, he would tell me March 2nd, 1999, and 15 minutes later, he'd have the invoice in my office. They all treat this building like their baby, and we're really lucky to have them, taking such good care of it. It's 137,000 square feet that they manage. It was last renovated in 97, 98. And if you don't know, for those in the audience, it includes most of our town departments, the police station, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, which is the dispatch center for four communities, our senior center, our recreation department, and some of their facilities, including a gymnasium, a little gym in the basement, spinning class, spinning studio, yoga station. So these three and a half folks take care of all of this, this entire facility. They also provide support to our other, some of our other properties, including the former HMLP plant at 38 Cushing Street, GR Hall, the old Tree and Park Barn at H. Short Street, all of the public meetings and special events that we have going on here, and any other facilities, like the fire stations that call on them for help. Our budget also includes Doreen, who runs the food service operations in our second-floor cafeteria, and our FY '20 total budget is $652,267.
Tom and Michelle, just maybe something that we could follow up on later. If, if I look at the detail on page 117, I'm just noticing that the FY '18 actual for electricity is considerably lower. I don't know if that's a question that you can answer right now. If not, perhaps we could follow up.
The reason for that in FY '18, so Shrek, the South Shore Regional Emergency Communications Center, pays us yearly rent. Part of that is dedicated, 20 percent of that is to the custodian salary, but oftentimes the rest of it is applied to the utilities primarily in electricity. So last year, a large chunk went to electricity.
Thank you.
Right out of the gate, questions on Town Hall? The next budget is the Town Meeting Budget. You can find the detail on page Roman numeral nine, excuse me, the summary on page Roman numeral nine, with the detail on page 62, I'm sure the presentation beginning shortly thereafter. It's a one-page summary, I believe, on page 62. So, the Town Meeting Departmental Request of FY 2020 is $33,192, which is what I'm recommending. That represents a $1,000 increase, or a 3.11 percent increase over last year. Michelle?
So, this budget is used for custodial support for Town Meeting, printing of over 10,000 warrants, and it also covers the equipment rentals, such as the chairs and the audio for Town Meeting.
Questions?
I mean, from time to time, we've talked about the postage, the printing and postage cost for the warrants. You know, I think it's a topic that is a perennial at Advisory Committee. You know, there's, to me, is sort of the plus-minus of, you could certainly make it readily available to people in PDF format, you know, on our website. The sort of minus is, you know, as an enticement to go to Town Meeting, to have the warrant show up at your house, kind of reminds you that the event is coming and it's here, and physically, you get something that reminds you of that. So I know we, we talk about it, it's not as if we don't, it's not as if we don't know there are alternatives out there, but I think, and I'm sure, I'm pointing at Donna Smallwood, the Chair of the Advisory Committee, I'm sure it'll come up again, but I leave it to you because I struggled with it myself, and, you know, to me, there was sort of a fiscal answer, and then there was, you know, a Town Meeting institutional answer, and I think that's where we've continued to end up.
Okay, the next budget is the unclassified budget, as we call it.
It's my favorite one.
A few miscellaneous items.
Clocks.
Today, I was honored.
I bet you were.
There is a summary on page Roman numeral 14, and the detail on presentation on page 335 with the detail on page 333. The unclassified budget request is $6,700, which is what I'm recommending. That is down $4,000 or a minus, or 37% decrease. Michelle?
So this budget is for things that don't fit easily into other categories, and the main expenditures are for printing of the annual town reports and caring for our antique clocks in Town Hall.
And what's the driver of the decrease?
The decrease is, so it was a line called "South Shore Coalition," and it's not something that we've paid, or the last time we paid it was 2010, so we decided to take that out.
We've been budgeting for it each year. It seems to have been an older, you know, historical need that was not being used, so we cut it.
We think it's in relation to MAPC.
Oh, okay.
I was working on the clocks today. The center clock should be up and running shortly in the Congo, January, February timeframe. And New North has a striker adjustment to it, so.
Is that coming out of this budget, or?
Yeah, I think it's already been done.
Already been done.
And I'm following up, you know, seeing the money's well spent.
Okay.
Copy the Town Administrator.
The next budget is found on Roman numeral, the summary on Roman numeral 12. This is the health imperatives budget. The detail is found on page 253. We have a $2,700 department request, which is what I am recommending, which is level-funded from last year.
So health imperatives, like the next budget, the South Shore Women's Resource Center, are community-based agencies that provide services to survivors of sexual assault, domestic violence. Their services range from, everything from crisis hotlines that are staffed 24/7 to emergency shelter, to counseling and advocacy support. For a fairly small donation, they're able to provide services to quite a few folks, and every year we ask them, how many individuals in Hingham were they able to serve this past year for this, for health imperatives? It was five survivors, and they also provided training to over 35 professionals in town.
And as Michelle mentioned, there's a, it's a sister budget for the South Shore Women's Center, is a budget of $3,700, is also level-funded from last year. And that presentation follows on page 261.
The South Shore Women's Center, they're a similar organization, offering the same types of services to folks, and they provided court advocacy to 72 Hingham residents in the last year, as well as advocacy at the Police Department to 21 different folks in town.
Doesn't the DA's office have a victim witness advocate, though? Just out of curiosity, or is this?
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I could reach out to them.
Okay.
Okay. That is the end of our budget presentation for this evening.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Thomas.
We'll be doing these budget presentations over the course of the rest of the month of December, and, so just show your own, the edge of your seats.
Well done, well organized. Thank you.
I hope you enjoyed the new presentations. The intent is to really, to bring out the work that's being done in the departments on the town's behalf, so hopefully that comes across.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. All right. At this point in the evening, to review and discuss the HMC lease and MOU requirements. I will point out that I am no longer recused.
Welcome.
I will participate.
Should we get rid of the mood lighting, or are you liking it?
Yeah, I like the lighting, though, but, you know, what the heck? I'll go with it. Okay. Some of you may know, I've accused myself from this topic in the past because my daughter, Roseman Conroy, was affiliated with the Hingham Maritime Center, but it's my understanding, she's separated her employment relationship with them, so here I am. Tom and Susan, I thought it might be helpful if either one of you were both, kind of gave us a snapshot in a way that's understandable to all, where we are and why we're here tonight.
All right. The reason why the Board of Selectmen is holding this discussion tonight is that it's a requirement of the lease. The term of the lease, which has a overall term of 30 years, was, has been broken down into phases with different benchmarks being set for each phase of the term in order to move along some proposed projects, which is part of the consideration of the lease, namely, the intention of Hingham Maritime to construct a larger, more comprehensive boathouse facility on the property during the course of the term. So the lease was signed in December of 2016. It took effect January 1, 2017. The Phase One term, the original period for the Phase One term was two years, so it would expire at the end of this year, December 31, 2018. The lease calls for the parties to meet prior to the expiration of each phase in order to evaluate where each of the parties are with their respective obligations for that phase. And then, once that determination is made, the lease has various sections saying, you know, if the town's here, this is what happens. If it's, you know, if X has occurred, then this happens. If Y has occurred, a different thing happens, et cetera. So it's kind of set up to try to create an evaluation schedule of where are the parties respectively, and what's the next step as provided in the lease. So the purpose of this meeting in compliance with the lease is to review the status of the Phase One term obligations. The Phase One term obligations included three separate obligations, two obligations of the town, one obligation of the tenant for this phase. The first lease obligation is the landlord and tenant working cooperatively to obtain sewer approvals. The sewer approvals is defined as all state and local permits and approvals required to connect the property to the Hingham Public Sewer System. That is requiring the town work with the MWRA in order to connect this property. The property is just outside the defined Hingham Sewer District. Because of that, there's been discussions that, if you want more detail, Tom can speak to. Tom's been involved in meetings with the MWRA and the Sewer Department staff and the engineers that were funded at last year's Town Meeting to determine if there is a way to do a more expedited process for the approvals, or whether the full-blown MWRA approval will be required. So that is still pending right now. We're waiting for a determination from the MWRA as to whether or not we have to do the full expedited process, or whether they'll agree to a shortened expedited process.
Weren't they gonna get their tape measure out again, take another look? That didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, so we did the tape measure. We actually had the engineer do it more officially.
So the answer is, they're still reviewing it.
Right, yeah, well-
They're still reviewing it. We've submitted new information. We're hoping to get a positive answer back. It's unknown. I don't want to lead one way or the other.
Right. Yeah, it's a determin, there's a reach-in area that's outside the district, and the question is whether or not we qualify for the reach-in or not, and we're waiting for them to give us a final determination.
Thank you.
So that's, that-
So close that it's unclear. That's the problem.
So that's where, so that, the town, depending on the requirements of the MWRA, if the town's required to go through a full-blown approval process, that involves a Town Meeting vote, it involves a special act, so that we're not going to know by December 31 whether or not the town has obtained all the approvals it needs for that extension. The second Phase One term obligation is the WRF improvement approvals. Again, that's a defined term, so it means all federal, state, and local approvals, permits, et cetera, but it also involves the, any Town Meeting authorizations, appropriations, funds from whatever source. It's basically getting the WRF work that's required for the Searise work, that would involve Barnes' WRF. It's getting that to the, you know, ready to put a shovel in the ground. At this point, the town engineer has been working primarily on that. I know he's talked to you many times at your meetings about the WRF work. There's engineering that's ongoing. Right, but the funding is not anticipated, I don't know if you want to speak to that. It's probably not anticipated, I think, at least until 2020, at the earliest-
For construction.
For that, right, for the actual work.
Got design, yeah, ongoing request for design funds for that.
Right, right. So the design's ongoing, but there's also, you know, funding for, you know, design and construction are still outstanding.
I would just add that the Harbor Development Committee asked the Board of Selectmen, they recommended prioritizing Barnes' WRF-
Yep.
-with the WRF Improvement Project, and the Board took that action largely due to its obligation under, to this lease obligation.
That's correct.
And I think that when the original lease was negotiated, it was understood that this process was going to take some time.
Right. So again, that is not going to be completed by December 31 of this year, which is the initial Phase One term. The third obligation is a tenant obligation, to use good-faith efforts to raise cash or commitments for 50% of the project funds, which is defined as all the money needed to actually do the entire facility. It's not just like the four walls and the roof of the building, but all the site work, bringing utilities, engineering, permitting, soup to nuts, what's this project going to cost, raising those funds. I can't, you know, HMC would have to speak to that directly. I can't speak to where the fundraising would be. So, you know, I think representatives of HMC are here as to where they are with that. I don't know if you want to speak to that first. But if you then go to the provisions of Section 2.2.1 of the lease that governs the Phase One term, it's, there's a subsection, little room in two. If either the sewer approvals or the WRF improvement approvals are not yet obtained and cannot be obtained by the end of this term, but are still obtainable, the Phase One term shall be automatically extended for up to two periods of one year each, and then with the parties meeting again, you know, next year, maybe a little earlier this time, but at some point prior to this first one-year extension. So under the terms of the lease, because the sewer and WRF improvement approvals are not yet obtained, the Selectmen may want to discuss, you know, whether you feel they're still obtainable, and if they are, that would trigger an automatic one-year extension of the Phase One term. So, and then that basically extends all of the deadline for all the obligations under the Phase One term. So that's, that's the primary reason why you're having this meeting, and this meeting had to be scheduled before the end of the year, was to comply with this review of where the Phase Term obligations were. I don't know if you want me to stop there, or kind of talk about the other, you know, in regular communications that the Town Administrator has with HMC on various issues of, you know, this, working with this town asset, you know, there are other provisions of the lease, or information that's been learned over the two years since the lease has been executed that might lend itself to considering modifications to various provisions of the lease. There are some proposals that could be discussed tonight if the Board of Selectmen wished to, but that, they kind of flow from looking at where are we, you know, as of now, under the lease, kind of led, what flowed from that was a discussion of, are there other provisions of the lease that maybe should be looked at and either added, you know, modified, added to, changed in any way? So that's, that's also a potential discussion item.
Susan, there was, well, this is very much, also to review the Phase One term obligations. This past May, when we had the one-year lookback-
Yep.
-an agreement was that, because there was an issue with respect to a conceptual plan, and that, and that we were to pick this up in the fall, and there was some clear direction given at that meeting as well. I realize that that does not fit into-
Right.
-the Phase One term obligations, but I think that's another reason why we're here.
Right, so that-
So I'm not sure where in the discussion it's appropriate to talk about that.
Well, it's tied in, and again, you know, I didn't, I wanted to, you know, ask the Selectmen as to, you know, at what point you want, maybe a representative from HMC to speak. The HMC owes the Board of Selectmen a revised conceptual plan consistent with direction that it's received from the staff, both the Town Administrator, staff on the second floor, and direction from, I believe, the meeting you had in May. So that's outstanding right now.
I mean, I don't want to harp on this, but it's really conceptual plans. I mean, I think there's been discussion of conceptual plans at the staff level, but, and again, I don't mean to harp on it, but the formality of the lease requires that the Board receive the conceptual plans, and we haven't done that. So there are revised conceptual plans, but we've, we've never-
I don't know that there's revised, I don't believe there's revised conceptual plans.
You just said revised conceptual-
No, but those were received, they're owed-
Never mind.
No, there were plans received back in January, they were reviewed internally.
Right.
A feedback was given, then they were brought to the Board. The Board gave specific direction. There's been discussions, but there's been no revised plans actually submitted to anyone at the Board level, at any level of the town.
Right.
All right, so we have no concept plan.
Right.
So we need to turn to the HMC and see where the concept plan is. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to that?
So there's, there's two things. There's the concept plans, and then also them reporting on the status of their Phase One obligation.
Right, obligation. Can I ask one question before you go away, or if you're not going to go away?
I'm not even going to go away.
When you were, when you were drafting this and negotiating with HMC, the conceptual plan is sort of a sidecar to these phases, and I guess I'm kind of wondering why that, why that structure, like why? Because it seemed like we're going to move along in these kind of ongoing tasks that we have, WRF improvements, fundraising- we have, Wharf Improvements, fundraising, and sewer improvements. And then over here, you're going to give us a design of the building within one year of the lease, which was December of 2017.
Well, in my understanding, and I think Tom was there for some of the negotiations because that's when he had first come into the town. Mary was also participated in some of the negotiations. So I'll give my recollection, and either Tom or Mary can refine that as their recollections match or not, is that the conceptual plans were given a shorter timeframe. The Phase One Term was a two-year with potential extensions. And a lot of the discussion was around you can't fundraise until you have a building to sell. And so, you know, tying it to the Phase One Term didn't make sense because if they had a conceptual plan at the end of two years, how could they start fundraising it? So there was a shorter window, again, for conceptual plan on... based on discussions with HMC that, yes, they'd get that plan done so they could start their fundraising. So, I mean, that's my recollection. I don't know if Tom or Mary has any additional recollections, but that's why it was its own freestanding obligation.
Thank you.
Richard Pedoni, 12 Newtown Drive, a member of the Board of HMC and former president of HMC. Speaking to the conceptual plans, we did present one and feedback was received, and we've had a lot of discussions on the Board about what is the right next step because basically the aspirational box and everything we wanted to put on the pier in conjunction with high school, second floor, ERG machines, rowing, lockers, et cetera, frankly, won't fit in the conceptual box that the feedback came to us. And so we've been going through a thoughtful process of how do we get this right versus spending money on architects and creating new conceptual plans that won't do the trick? And so a discussion we had with Mr. Mayo was perhaps the period for new conceptual plans coming to you could be extended out so that we could have time to work with the folks at high school rowing and ourselves and do this in as cost-efficient a manner to come up with some new plans that will work, digesting and then implementing the feedback. And that also seemed to work with the time period for when we would actually be breaking ground. And so we welcome feedback on how to meet your needs for seeing plans sooner, if that's a need, or...
What I've heard, and Tom, maybe you can correct me, is that it was only until about two weeks ago. I mean, I think what I've been hearing since May or June, and if you hear a little frustration in my voice, it's because this is really frustrating to me. I think in May and June, we gave clear direction and said, "We understand that what HMC wants to build can't be built as of right. Let's look at what can be built as of right and see how far apart the things are." And what I've been hearing in reports from Mr. Mayo over the last several months is HMC continuing to want to build a two-story structure that can't be built. And talking to permitting boards and talking to Mr. Mayo, but continuing to try to drive something that unfortunately, given our zoning, you know, can't be built. So I feel like the last four or five months have been squandered a little bit and that we're continuing to have kind of the same conversation about what can't be built. So it's a little difficult for me to be getting a request to push deadlines back because I'm not sure we're all on the same page right now. And I don't know, Tom, I don't know if I'm incorrect on that or...
No, that's the right report. I think HMC had a desire to build, like Rick said, a certain structure that fit their... all their aspirations and all the needs, both from their program as well as the high school program. They were told several months ago that that's not something that's permissible. They wanted to investigate that a little bit. That took some time. They've met downstairs. They've come back to me. I'm just hearing now, just recently, from Mr. Pedoni, that that's a... that they now, I believe, understand that that's something that is going to have to change. A formidable-sized building is likely in the offing now. The question is on timing and whether or not the quote-unquote "extension" can be approved or can be provided for within the existing Phase One Term. That's kind of the question that I think Susan could probably speak to better than I can.
I think it depends on when the revised conceptual plans come in. You know, there's a quest... There's a year... It's getting pushed out a year automatically based on the sewer and wharf work. It's plausible that the sewer approvals would be done by the end of next December. It seems like it's more questionable that the wharf approvals will be all done by the end of 2019, since there was discussion of potential funding in 2020. So, you know, there's a possibility that this Phase One Term is going to go out into sometime, you know, you may get to mid-2020 by the time the town's Phase One Term obligations are complete. So, you know, there's... I can't speak to the fundraising end of it. That's not my expertise at all. But depending on when there was a conceptual plan that presumably could work, quote-unquote, within, you know, the parameters that, you know, the town has in place now, there's still... there would still be some time in the Phase One Term to begin some fundraising and still be within that term. Whether it would be enough time to raise, you know, 50% of the funds, I don't know. It's something that the Selectmen could reevaluate, you know, depending on when the conceptual plans come in and then how much time is left in the Phase One Term. So it's something you could always revisit, depending on progress that's made. Is that helpful?
I think for me, I'm feeling like it's really important to see if there is a conceptual plan that, you know, and look, I get where you guys are coming from. I mean, I get what you want to build. I know it's frustrating that you may not be able to build everything you want. I guess what... The question that I have in my mind right now, given what's... Given where we are, is is there a mutually agreeable conceptual plan that, you know, that can be built and that allows you to do the programming stuff you want? And I don't think you guys know the answer to that question right now. It's a little tough for me to talk about extending leases and making other decisions until we know if there's enough common ground on a conceptual plan to move forward.
I guess one thing I might ask is, is there any information that you need with respect to the wharf improvements and/or the sewer improvements that would hinder your ability to produce a conceptual plan in some short order?
No, but if I could explain my understanding of the lease. The lease term rolls over automatically at this point because it is impossible for the town to achieve the milestones despite best efforts, and this is what we all contemplated. It rolls over for a year, and then we will revisit at some point next year whether or not the town can hit its targets and we can hit our targets and may roll over another year because we're all trying as best as we can to deal with the MWRA and the wharf improvements. We understand that and appreciate that. And that frankly provides quite an extensive window to figure out the best design. As we understood the lease, it required us to deliver a conceptual plan and begin the dialogue, and we would like to have a really healthy dialogue with the Board, a member of the Board, a subcommittee, continue our dialogue with high school rowing about, given the footprint that it makes sense to go with, and we're not seeing right now that anything other than the footprint that has been discussed last May makes sense. Given that footprint, what should go there to provide the maximum amount of programming to the kids in this town and adult use? And we want to have a, frankly, a thoughtful dialogue with high school rowing and those folks and high school sailing about what should go where, given the limited resources. And we really don't want to rush a new plan without a real need for it. So what we were hoping to ask for is if we could have the time for a new conceptual plan be understood to be six months. I don't believe that the lease requires us to get back in a specific period of time with a new plan. And Susan could correct me, and I could be wrong on that, but it does.
There was some like 60-day back and forth. I think it's 8.4. Yep. Well, here's the thing. I don't disagree with what you're saying, and part of the reason I asked you whether you needed more information under the wharf improvement or sewer approvals is, right, it doesn't make sense to design a building that would be materially changed by information that we still don't have.
No, I think that part's covered.
On the other hand, you know, as Mary said, we thought you left the room in May with the understanding that these thoughtful conversations would begin in May. You know, it would be... It would have been much nicer to come in and have a presentation tonight that would have included information gleaned from those thoughtful conversations instead of what we're hearing. You know, it just... We've all been at this a long time. I think I've made no secret of the fact that, you know, I think the lease is very detailed and puts a lot of requirements on all of us to manage our behavior consistent with what we've agreed to. And it gets... It just gets frustrating to me that as we run through this, we seem not to have kept pace with it. Okay, I think we can agree with that. And so now I think we're in a position to, you know, as you suggest, come up with at least a new timeline with respect to Phase One that is a default in the lease. But the production and the ongoing, I think, evaluation of the conceptual plans is, you know, I think something I'd like to see some... Some sort of a timeline placed on so that we trust that the conversations would be happening and would be ongoing. You know, when you talked before about your aspirational box, I mean, I agree with Mary, and I looked at those first plans. It was a beautiful building, super expensive and beautiful, but the zoning bylaws is zoning bylaw. That's been, you know, the rules of the road since this started. So, you know, I guess I'd be inclined to make a finding under the Phase One rules that the wharf improvements and sewer improvements have not been obtained but are obtainable. But I'm just not quite sure what we do about the conceptual plans, and I'm also just not quite sure we do... What we do with the fundraising obligation embedded in Phase One, and I'm not quite sure what we do about the outside project costs to which that 50% would be, you know, evaluated against.
Rick, are you or somebody who's here prepared to give an update on the Phase One? Just looking for the right words.
Fundraising.
The funding commitment, like where, you know? So it was 50% is Phase One, so, you know, I know you secured a grant from the Seaport Bond, but where are you relative to that 50%?
So I'll give a high-level update, and Peter Dolphin will have to speak to some more details. So we don't actually believe that the grant, well, it's a great step forward, actually qualifies as being applied to the total cost because the docks were kept separate.
Okay.
Despite discussions that perhaps they could be included, they were kept separate.
But we appreciate your getting that grant nonetheless.
Yeah, and it will greatly help the kids and provide certainty, and I know one issue is, did we get the docks in early enough in the year for everybody? And frankly, better quality docks are going to go a long way towards making that safe. So we're pleased with that and appreciate the cooperation the town's providing. So the efforts that have been undertaken were... We retained Laura Winters, who's a fundraising consultant and has worked on other projects in town. Laura helped us develop a fundraising plan, extensive outreach, identifying individuals in town who could make significant donations, corporations who could make donations. I don't want to name names or amounts, but that outreach has been undertaken. There's been some issues with folks saying, "I don't want to cut a check and put it in your bank account. We know what's happening," or make a commitment as to exactly what we're investing in. So these timelines have somewhat hampered our fundraising in a way that we hadn't fully expected, but we definitely have made the good faith efforts. We know we owe you a letter under the lease or an affidavit of some sort describing this in a bit more detail that is required, and that's due before the end of the year, and we're planning on providing that.
Okay.
A little layout, and then we've obviously made investments in engineers and other costs as we've gone along with funds that we've raised to cover the costs of getting to where we are.
And so I guess one of the things with the conceptual design that I understand is it's to our mutual benefit to have a conceptual plan that we all agree on because I understand that that conceptual plan is needed for the fundraising and that, you know, people want to see what it is I'm... What it is that I'm contributing to. So to me, the importance and the urgency around a conceptual plan is high because there's a relationship to the fundraising. And, you know, I'm... I can... Speaking for myself, I don't think I'm in a place right now to even contemplate any changes to the fundraising plan. I sort of feel like we got to kind of nail this conceptual plan thing down first, and I understand there are different triggers in the lease, but...
So it's supposed to be a 60-day back and forth. We approve, disapprove, specifically describing our reasons, which, you know, I think that we were just concerned you weren't going to build what you had anticipated producing, what you produced as part of the conceptual plan. So then we did that, and then you're supposed to come back to us 60 days later with some revised plan, and we go back and forth like that until we come to some mutual agreement. So it's this sort of two-month windows that we're supposed... That's the timeline at the lease. So I guess, you know...
What happened?
In terms of the timeline, that...
When you were given the message, what did you do?
We put a good lot of thought into what the alternatives were to build something that met the intended use of both high school rowing and sailing that frankly appears to be too big and is not a path worth pursuing, but a bunch of time went into that.
That was known at the outset, though. You know what the zoning bylaw says. You know what the height limits are?
There are other ways to approve a building which do not appear wise at this time that were also known, and that would be going to town meeting, and that's not a path being pursued. But a lot of thought was put into to meet the needs, the lockers, the size of the building, the requirements, what other ways of doing it. And that may have been a fool's errand to spend time thinking about it, and I respect that, and we're not pursuing that.
So I guess one of the things...
That's where the time went.
Yeah, one of the things that might be helpful is... One of the things that might be helpful is when you get into that, right? And you know you have a 60-day deadline. Like, it'd be helpful if you reach out. You know, I just... I'm a rule-oriented person, so when I read this thing, I read the rules, and it's just frustrating to... It's frustrating that that didn't happen. Like, if you would come back to us 60 days later and said just exactly what you're saying tonight, it gets received differently than it's now, whatever it is, November, whatever.
I hear that loud and clear and apologize.
No, and I'm not looking for an apology. All I'm... I guess what I'm looking for is that we all agree to this, you know? And when I say "we," I mean the town and HMC agree to this. And so I think we need to be respectful of the agreement that we made, and we, you know, if you know you're in this conceptual plan phase, then somebody ought to look at the lease and go to the lease... Go to that provision and say, "Here's what we need to do, folks." And it just, you know, we have an obligation on behalf of the town, right, to... We made this agreement on behalf of the town, and now we're in a position where we need to enforce the agreement on behalf of the town. And it's just difficult and frustrating.
Can I?
Sorry.
I haven't had the pleasure of being involved in this process up until now, but I'm very mindful of the fact that your organization has been in this town for four decades, and you provide an affordable rowing and sailing program for the children and adults of this I think rather than engage in, you know, backstop explanations of why certain things didn't happen, I think the focus should be on developing a concept plan that complies with the existing zoning bylaw. You know, you are correct. There are... Anyone can go to town meeting with a zoning bylaw... to town meeting with a zoning bylaw proposal, but guess what? It takes a two-thirds vote at town meeting. They're very difficult to pass. It's highly unlikely such a thing would pass. There'd be determined resistance, you know, from multiple boards that sit on this town. There's no relief given for that down at the harbor at all. There's a 28-foot height limitation, correct, counsel?
Mm-hmm.
You know, you have parking constraints that also drive the size of the building as well, any potential building that goes on down there. So, I mean, I think it's time to get realistic about what can actually be done on that wharf. You know, I think you can build the structure without any kind of reference to the existing seawall work. I think you know that already. It's time to get to work. Come up with a plan, socialize it with, you know, second floor, us, and then start making your pitch for money. Right?
Agree. So, can I make a specific request with regard to that time period? If, I think, under any circumstances, for us to rush back to you in 60 days, it's not going to be sufficient standing where we are today to work things through with high school rowing and figure out what's the best use of a building design. We could clearly come back with something that fits the footprint and looks like a building that would probably have an outside that looks like what we gave you, but it's not going to be as thoughtful as it should be. So, we were hoping for six months to work through this.
But can't you, can't you develop the internal operational aspects of whatever you want to do down there, independent of the structure that you contemplate building? Or, I mean, I just, I'm bogged down. You have, you have limited space anyways. Some of that space has got to be devoted to parking and circulation use. That drives whatever your design's going to be anyways. So, the roadway isn't going to ameliorate that problem for you. The roundabout, the rotary is going to continue to be a significant infrastructure presence that you're going to have to contend with, no matter what. So, I mean, you know a lot of these pieces, they're in place right now. So, you can, you can get this concept up. We're continuing to work, you know, to do the seawall funding in association with the harbor and the others wharfs. You know, we're continuing to pursue the sewer hookup. We're doing our end. It's time for you guys to do your thing.
Rick, I think what I worry about a little bit is that, you know, it's the end of November, so if that's the end of May-
It's May, yeah.
That's a, that's a six-month window for fundraising. And I, that just feels like a very tall order. And, you know, and I'm not in a position right now to extend fundraising commitments or anything. And, like, I feel like we got to, we got to see what this conceptual plan looks like. Is it, again, is there, is there a plan that will, that will be satisfactory for the programmatic needs and that also works for the town?
The thing I'm worried about, I guess, oh, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to make a note. I think there's two different aspects of the conceptual plan. There's the creating, you know, the four walls and the roof that fit dimensionally on the site, consistent with the existing zoning. I'd just like to note that with respect to existing zoning, there is an existing, like, side yard variance on that, that I think, obviously, the staff can't speak for the boards, but they're saying to the extent that there's already been one granted, and that might be something that could carry over, that has to just do with side yards as opposed to height. So, there's the, the volume of the building can be established because I think working with their, you know, if they have a design people, person, and the second floor staff will say, okay, what's the volume of this building? I think the other part that's challenging, and some of it goes to specific requirements that the town has dictated in the lease, is what, how is that volume of the building going to be used? And, you know, I don't want to speak for HMC or Rick, but I know just in conversations we've had, talking to Tom, that's where the challenge is. How, once you define the volume that you can build without extraordinary zoning, you know, amendments or relief, how do you use it? And there's some things that the town is requiring be included, and that then has to be dovetailed with what, you know, the internal uses needed for the operation.
Sure.
So, that's, but I just, so just because Paul's kind of getting caught up to speed, I just wanted to give him the context. So, Paul, if all they had to do was put four walls and a roof and figure out this is where it's going to sit, and this is the volume, it seems to me that's something that you don't really need two months to do. I think they have more to do than that. I don't know how long that would take them. But I'm saying, I just wanted Paul to have the, kind of, the bigger picture of what, that it's beyond the four walls and the roof. It's kind of what's going to go on inside. I don't know that it has to be nailed down to a-
So, that's also where the, the back and forth is going to be helpful. So, I'm just, you know, I'm remembering lockers.
Right.
We talked-
And public bathrooms.
We talked a lot about lockers.
We have.
And, you know, so, so again, you know, you know, if there's a conceptual plan and hypothetically you come back to us and say, look, we can do all these things, but instead of this many lockers, it's this many lockers, or there's no room for lockers, then we've got a decision to make. Then, you know, then we've got to kind of look at that and say, okay, are we, you know, where are we going to be on that? It's very hard to have those conversations without, without a plan and some specifics. I think we've, we've talked about, we talked during the negotiations about the fact that things will pop up that we didn't expect, and we're going to have to deal with them. And, you know, I think this board wants to deal with those things. It's just very difficult without a plan to make firm decisions that'll help us both move forward.
Two things come to mind. First, on the fundraising side, having drawn too big of a building and talked to funders about it and given them a taste of what it looks like, people can see what we're doing. And we're beyond, at this point, with the people we're discussing, needing to trigger their imagination. We can trigger it, and we can take what we have and say, picture a trunk, and now let's have a discussion about what goes inside. So, I do not believe, and Peter, you can correct me if, on the fundraising side, we are being at all hampered by not having further along conceptual plans. And then, our hope would be to come to you after having worked with high school rowing and high school sailing, and frankly, several new members of our board are folks who came over from the high school rowing board, and there's cross-pollination among the boards. And the community, I think the communications are great. And we would prefer to come to you and say, we've all gotten a room together, and we all agree that this is how the number of lockers should be and what it should look like. But I also hear that you want more involvement in that. But I'm hesitant to say that the right thing is for us to go spend money on an architect drafting the plans and presenting them and redrafting the plans. I'd love to have an informal working group or some less formality and expense to it.
My concern with that, with, so you're saying May, you'd come back to us in May with what?
New plans that we think would be acceptable to high school rowing and high school sailing and fit the bill. And if there were informal discussions with Mr. Mayo or one or more of you, or an informal reporting on where we are between now and then, that's fine. We don't need to stop the process. It's just spending the money on the architect to do something that may prove fruitless is very unattractive to us. But reporting-
My concern, the timing, I guess I, I hear you. The thing I'm concerned about is that, you know, May turns to summer, we lose everybody's attention, we don't pick it up again until the fall. It's just the, the timing's awkward in terms of, you know, kind of town processes, but-
Can I, can I make a suggestion? That, you know, as I was mentioning, I think that the first step is determining kind of the four walls and roof of this building. How big can it be consistent with what the Land use staff is advising based on the zoning that exists? So, does it potentially make sense to say, let's, let's, let's break this down, let's get that, let's get that box set. Let's, and now the box may shift, you know, a few feet this way to a few feet that way, you know, that doesn't matter. What size box are we talking about? Because I think-
That's doable.
That's doable. And then, simultaneously, but maybe it may take a little more time, and obviously defer to the board on what you think is reasonable, start, you know, filling in. So, it may be able to do without kind of, you know, and again, I'm not an architect, I don't, I don't know, but, you know, what type of investment it is to just, what's the box that we're starting with and get something going, you know, just kind of little benchmarks of progress here to, you know, show that rather than wait. Because regardless of what the programming ends up being inside the building, the box can only be what the box is going to be. So, it may be worthwhile to determine what does that box look like.
What's your point, right?
Yeah, exactly. To me, seems obvious. I haven't read the lease, but it seems kind of obvious.
We are happy getting to yes on the box size that we should be working with and what goes inside, much more quickly.
That's going to drive what you can really do there.
It does.
Got parking. You've got to do a parking analysis with whatever box you decide to come up with, too, my man.
Getting to the size of that box drives our discussion with high school rowing and high school sailing about what should be going inside. So, that's different, though, than a conceptual plan where we draw the doors and the windows and all of that. That's my-
I don't think I need, I don't think I need that.
We got to know, I think, you know, if, you know, and I'm using the word box, which is not, you know, Nancy, I'm sorry.
Nancy will make it a beautiful box.
You know, but, but I think what we're sort of looking for is if this is the box that fits with zoning, and you've got a degree of comfort that these are the programs that we can do, and there may be some challenging discussions to have, but if we're aligned on that, that tells me we're moving in the right direction. I feel like we need to make sure we're moving in the right direction and that this can work for both of us. And I am, you know, I think we're all sensitive to, you work very hard to raise your money. And, you know, we don't want to be in a situation where you're drawing multiple sets of plans and, you know, we're sensitive to that. But, you know, if you can tell us this is the footprint of the building, we can, we can make this work. We have to have some conversations with sailing and the other groups, and it works for the town. I think that's a really good start.
Are the mechanicals within the 28 feet? Are the mechanicals within the 28 feet?
I would have to double-check that, Paul. I don't, I don't believe, I believe that not they're, so, but, it all depends on what the, the design of the roof is, right, as to where, whether the mechanicals, yeah.
And you are, sir, if you could just come to the podium there and identify yourself by name and address. Welcome.
Scott Menard, 12 Cottage Street.
How are you?
Also on the hanging board, and I'm actually taking over for Nancy as the building committee.
Get the hotbed.
So, ultimately, the 28 feet is to the peak of the roof, and it would be all-inclusive. So, it's fundamentally, when we talk about a box, that would be everything, not a mast or something, if you had something odd relative to a mechanical system, but it would fundamentally enclose it.
Can I just suggest, I think part of what I heard Mayor Susan say, and I might be getting confused in the conversation, is that instead of asking HMC to produce a box, a plan, a box on a plan, that we ask our second floor staff to design, to put a box on a plan that is the maximum allowable size, and then present that back to them to see that they can determine what fits or doesn't fit in terms of their, their applications. But-
Well, I mean, I think that the staff could give them the dimensional and then have them draw.
Save a lot of back and forth if we just did it that way.
Right. I, I think that, you know, and it may be that Emily Wentworth, you know, may have done some of this already, although I'm not exactly the extent of the conversations of if she provides them with the dimensionals, and then they go draw it, and then they look at Emily and say, Emily, does this work? You know what I mean? It might, yeah.
Dimensions.
Might cut out a step. Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, so how long would that take?
Mid-March be acceptable?
What have we got? No, no.
So, that would, so that would start with us, and we would be able to provide that in a week or two.
Well, she'd be able to give them the basic dimensional stuff that they need. I would think, yeah.
You guys, that's what I'm saying. We would be able to provide you that information within a couple of weeks, and then it's up to you.
So, I think what I'm also hearing Rick say a little bit is that if you have those dimensional requirements, what HMC would like to do is to look at that and, and that they would want to have the opportunity to talk to the other groups that have activities down there because there may, there may need to be some discussions. And, you know, frankly, I would, the idea that those discussions would happen without our office being involved is a good thing for, to me.
Okay, I'm getting confused now because I thought Susan was trying to break this up into two parts and say, let's, let's produce a picture of a building that fits the dimensional requirements without the programmatic discussion. And then, let's take that picture of the building and then run through, in a parallel track, let's, let's initiate, you know, as soon as possible, the conversations with the various groups that use that facility for programming, your own group, Hingham Rowing and Sailing and the high school. But it would, it would go on a parallel track. So, we'd have, we'd at least all have an understanding of the dimensional requirements for that building. And I thought what I heard Mr. Padoni say was, at least having that on paper, you know, maybe there's a variance here or there in it, but at least having that on paper, that's a bit of a driver for the programmatic discussions because you've only, you've only got what you got. But I think what it does for me anyway is it shows a little bit of progress toward the, toward the goal, if that makes any sense.
So, two steps.
I think, yeah. Because I agree. I don't want to waste money or time, frankly, producing a bunch of drawings. I think that, I think we should work toward a drawing that's, that is workable programmatically in a building that can be built. And so, maybe we start with the building that can be built phase, and in a parallel track, hold these programmatic conversations. You know, I, again, I, I don't want to rush it. On the other hand, I want to, I want to, I want to keep some incentive in progressing along a timeline.
Certainly. So, what I would propose is, I understand that rough dimensions can be gotten, given to us within a month, probably much sooner.
Sure.
And then, we will take those, and we will pre-plan our discussions with rowing and sailing. And I'm proposing that by mid-March, we come to you with something less than full-blown conceptual plans with pretty colors, but a layout and a footprint, and having communicated with sailing and rowing and saying, here's the size, here's what we think we can do with it. And then we would begin to move towards the next step-
Sort of more detailed phase of the-
-of what the outside of the building would look like. But we would get to you by mid-March with, you know, how the space will be used, what would be in the space.
How would be to fundamentally give you a shot of what we're not giving? Because ultimately, something has to give so that-
Yeah, yeah.
...we can do a comparison of what the lease kind of contemplates versus what we can deliver in that space from, just from a programmatic perspective.
Yep. I'd make, one other comment. The prior plans, as everyone said, they were beautiful, but they were permitting level elevations. So, they looked like they were very detailed, probably, expensive. I mean, it would seem to me at this point, if you had, you know, sheet of paper with a, you know, you now know the dimensions of the building, it's whatever it is, 10 by 10, I'm making this up, right? And you have, you know, it's a rectangle, and, okay, how would we divide it up on, you know, the first floor, the half floor, whatever it is? I don't think you need permit level architect, you know, fancy elevate, permitting level elevation, all that kind of stuff. I think at this point, you know, you're talking about drawing the rectangle on a, and boxing out areas and saying, what can we fit and where can we do it? Which I would think would be, you know, probably more cost-efficient. And start and say, are we moving in the right direction?
Right.
If you're in the right direction-
Keep going.
Then you keep going. So, I, I mean, I'm just suggesting much more basic steps rather than full-blown, beautiful drawings to keep things moving along.
Basic steps, sure.
I'd suggest, if this works, if we're saying 30 days till we kind of have the picture of the box, right, and what are the dimensions, my suggestion would be that, that every 30 days, you just have a check-in with Tom. Not necessarily like a working meeting or anything, but to say, this is what's taken place over, these are the conversations we've had. I think, I think it'll help us to know that these conversations are happening. And moreover, if in having those conversations, we run up against something where this board needs to get involved, I'd rather know that before March. If we know, if we know there's a decision to be made in January, I'd rather not wait 60 days. I'd just like to keep this going. Does that-
Do you want any three analysis, whatever you decide to draw?
Well, right. So, Paul's talking about parking. So Paul's talking about parking, that's special permit A3, just to translate for the non, the non-planning lots in their room.
I'm never going to understand that stuff.
I...
It's only fair.
Right. I understand that, Paul. That is, that's not part of what is in the lease for the selectmen to review, but, I mean, you know, it's up to the selectmen to be extended.
We specifically say in the lease that we don't...
I, yeah. I just want to...
You know, we're back to the rules over here.
At the end of the day, it's up to this board to decide what you want to ask for. I'm just pointing out what the lease actually calls for.
Well, I just want to see if what they are wanting to build is realistic. I mean, it's...
Right, but, right, but there's other provisions in the lease that allow for shared parking with other, for example, now they had shared parking where, there's a provision in the lease that allowed for shared parking down at the harbor among commonly owned parcels. So for example, when they were having issues with parking, they were having the students parking down closer to the, you know, further down and walking up to the wharf because it was getting overloaded. So there's, there's some flexibility on the parking and that, and I don't, you know, I, yeah, I think that there's more to that zoning analysis that's beyond the conceptual, what was thought about in the conceptual plan provision of the, of the lease.
Fair enough.
All right, so we're going to provide some information to them. Emily, Emily.
I will talk to Emily tomorrow.
Hope you're watching.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
And then you all will work toward, toward a drawing that indicates a building within, a building as of right, right? And you will have...
Let me be clear, there's no building that we're going to build here that will be as of right.
Well, I mean, right, not...
There'll be toned down, there'll be less zoning conflict, conflict. I just, just because literally if you push this into the box, you'll have a 10-foot wide building that's 70-foot long.
With reasonable zoning accommodation.
Correct.
Okay. So...
Special permit.
So...
Sorry.
It's in his blondie, can't help it.
All right, so we're going to give you that information. You're going to produce that drawing when? Like that basic drawing? Because then that's going to drive your discussions with...
I think what was just described is we'll reach out to Tom on a monthly basis and bring to him not just what we've been doing, but any product that we produce. And by March, the commitment is that we'll come here with a conceptual plan with a program that will show...
With a very basic conceptual plan.
Correct.
With a, that includes programmatic needs.
Correct.
Right? Okay.
That work?
The last thing I would just say is that, you know, this is the, this is the right time of year to be having these conversations with the other groups because in the middle of the summer, you know, you guys, and you do a great job, but you've got, you know, you've got hundreds of kids on that wharf, you're responsible for their safety on and off the water, keeping track of them, you, you know, you hire instructors, you're doing all those wonderful things that makes Hingham Maritime a great place to be. That's the last time, that's, you don't have a lot of bandwidth to be focusing on this bigger project. So please, you know, let's make use of the off-season time to have these conversations because it's only going to get harder to do as we move closer to the boating season.
And we may even suggest, Mr. Mayo, that we can come in sooner with those, communicate with them.
That's a capital idea.
I can take a hint.
Before we lose our, our friends sit down from HMC, I just wanted to, there is another issue before us.
Well, I mean, I think the thing we need to do is we need to make a finding.
Okay.
So that this, this part of the lease term will automatically extend.
Yep.
And what I thought I heard from Mary was there was no appetite to change any of the terms within the Phase One term at this point.
I'm not prepared to do that right now.
And, what? No, no, she's got it.
You got that right.
Okay. So do I need to, do I need to move that we make a finding or?
Um, I, you know, we might as well put it on the record and why don't you...
Okay.
Move that we make the finding and therefore that will trigger the rollover.
Okay. I move that pursuant to the terms of the lease between the town of Hingham and the Hingham Maritime Center, Section 2.2.1, Little Roman II, that the sewer approvals and wharf improvement approvals are not yet obtained, oh wait, I didn't, I read that.
Yep, that's right.
And cannot be obtained by the end of the Phase One term, but may still be obtainable in the Phase One, such that the Phase One term shall be automatically extended for one year.
Yep.
Second?
Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. All right. And we're just going to leave alone. We'll go on the instructions from tonight with respect to the conceptual draws, right? Okay.
So the second issue before us tonight is a potential license for HMC to utilize the property owned by the town of 308 Cushing Street for storage of their boats. If you'll remember, we do this currently, we allow storage of crew boats in this facility from the high school team. So those are high school, town-owned properties, so they're stored in there without a formal license agreement. In this case, we have a private, a private user that is looking to utilize our facility, so we need to have a formal license process. I would point out, it's one of the few buildings in town that's large enough to accommodate these, these boats, so it's, it's already being used for that facility. Susan can speak to some of the reasons for some of the nine-page license agreement.
Hey, we're getting our money's worth. It's not quite, it's six-page, yes.
Sorry.
It's six-page.
Lot of trees going down.
Um, I, so the license would allow a shared use of an area to be designated that's not being used by the high school rowing team for their equipment. It would commence, they're currently have a permit, because they're a private party, there is a permit pending at the zoning board right now that should get resolved in the next couple of weeks. That would permit them to do this. And then once, the term would go from when they move in until when they take everything out with an outside date, which I think we put at May 31st, just in case it's a really bad winter or something, but they anticipate needing everything and taking everything out significantly earlier than that. It would allow the storage in the building as well as putting some of the, I believe the launch boats on trailers in the parking lot of that, of that property. It's not anticipated that they would need a lot of access, but to the extent they needed access for whatever purposes, their access would have to be coordinated through the town staff so they would not have, they would not be able to access the building without the town being aware that they needed access to the building. So it would be scheduled for particular days and times and number of hours, whatever they needed. There is a, there's a license fee that a Tom determined based on having Sally review what the electrical costs in the buildings has been over like a year average and then factoring their proportionate use of it. So that is a proposed $500 a month license fee, which would be prorated for any partial months. They would need to have, you know, insurance for their own stuff. The town would not be liable for anything that happens, God forbid, you know, the place burned down, the town would not be responsible for their possessions that are in there.
Where's that, where's that insurance? I know they've got general liability, but is there real, like real property insurance?
Well, there's, the town holds the insurance on the property.
Yeah.
They would be responsible for, at risk for their own property. So to the extent they want their property insured, they would have to ensure that themselves, the town wouldn't be responsible for it.
Okay.
So there's a provision in it that basically says the town, it's at, you know, the town has no responsibility for the property that they have in, in the building.
Oh, there it is, sole risk, okay.
So that's kind of the, just overview of the main terms. Because it's a license, it's where required by law to make it revocable, but there's a built-in reasonable kind of notice period. I don't know that Tom's anticipated any reason why between now and May, the town will need to revoke it, but it's just something that we need to build into the license.
And the two days prior notice, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, "HMC shall be responsible for any damage to the property resulting from the negligence or intentional acts of HMC's employees." Why isn't it just if they cause damage, they're responsible, even if it's accidental or otherwise? Like...
Well, yeah, that would be negligent. I mean, that's just kind of standard contract language.
Yes, strict. Well, I mean, like, look, you guys, I'm happy to have you use it, but if you break it, it's yours.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
How much cumulative equipment will be outside in the yard? Just, I'm, Tom, I'm thinking both because we also store the high school boats there, so I'm...
You guys speak to the amount of the equipment. Nick, you got to come to the microphone, sorry.
Nick Judson, the executive director of Hingham Maritime Center. To answer the question in terms of boats on the facility in the parking area, we have nine, basically chase boat, safety boats that would be on trailers. So they wouldn't, they would be mobile and easily moved if needed to be, but that would be what we have on the property.
Thank you. Tom, I know when I, you know, when I've gone by there, there's still some stuff there from National Grid and I'm just, I'm thinking about, it's not so much an issue for you guys, but for us, that, you know, we do have some neighbors that live nearby and I'm just thinking about, over the next couple of months, a lot of, a lot of things are going to go in there. So I think anything we can do to make it look neat, to try to keep things, you know, there's parts of that parking lot where things are a little bit more visible. I just don't want to have, you know, neighbors on Cushing Street complaining about the cumulative level of activity.
Agreed. I, you know, we thought a lot about this as well. I think this is a pretty, you know, innocuous use of the property, especially considering what it used to be used for, with the light plant in and out to, in and out of it, you know, 24 hours a day. I think that this is a pretty good use. That said, I agree with you about the National Grid storage down there now. As we all know, there's a lockout and it's kind of tying up their operations. So I will be reaching out to them to notify them that their equipment is there still, reminding them that it's there, it's being staged for future work, but it's potentially in the way. And I'm not sure, it needs to all be removed, quite frankly, in order to accommodate these nine boats, but it needs to be positioned in a way that it's not going to be problematic down the road.
I think that would be a good idea. Thank you.
And, you know, I hear you that the light plant was a much busier use than this. I think the issue, however, is folks have gotten used to the light plant not being there. So this looks like more activity than has been there. So to Mary's point, I just think that keeping it looking as neat as possible and being mindful of the level of activity, I think, would be helpful to those neighbors. But one other technical question I had was insurance indemnity and risk of loss, Article Six, and I think there's somewhere else where it's referenced. The town, its officers, agents and employees, do volunteers count as agents for their purpose?
Volunteers are municipal employees under state law. They're special municipal employees.
Okay, I know we are, but...
Yeah, no, everybody is, it's just, you, you are a municipal employee.
Okay.
I'm a special municipal employee, so it depends on what you are, but everyone is classified as an employee under state law of a different type.
So anybody affiliated with the town, volunteer or otherwise, would be covered under this indemnity?
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. And then, "HMC shall fail to perform or comply with any condition of this license." I'm assuming that would include the failure to maintain insurance?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess the termination doesn't really matter. I thought, I thought a month, but...
Yeah, we, I, we just, they would have to find a place to relocate everything, so we just thought, give it a little more.
Okay. And on the insurance minimums, I'm assuming they name us now, right, for the operation at, on Barnes Wharf? So this would be an additional insurance policy for this location?
I mean, they would have to, and again, I'm not an insurance expert, but I'm assuming you'll need to add this location as a covered. And so to the extent that they have at least this much under their existing general liability, as long as this property is added to the coverage, the cover, the covered locations, then, you know, it should be, it should be all set.
Okay. Well, I guess the only substantive change, you tell me, maybe, I'm just being picky with the language, would be, you know, if there's any damage caused by HMC under, all I'm saying is if you guys are there...
I'm sorry, what section are you in?
Two. It's the second paragraph.
Yeah.
Second sentence off of the bottom of that paragraph.
Yeah, you want to just make it generic as opposed to any damage they cause? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep? Okay.
Do we have to vote this?
Can I suggest that if we take a vote, we, you approve this as amended? I can have Attorney Murphy perfect these changes tomorrow and I can contact the center.
Because there's no changes to the signature page, right? So...
We can sign it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I didn't see it on our vote. What was it?
I'm getting nods from the agents.
No, I don't, you know what? I, yep, I think that, I didn't give Sharon a vote, I'm sorry. That's...
Entertain a motion to approve the license to use real estate, temporary storage at 308 Cushing Street, as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
That was easy.
That was easy, yeah.
Sorry.
Off that. Now my favorite part of the evening, the liquor licenses.
Boy.
Thanks a lot.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thanks for staying.
You know what?
Thank you very much, Susan. Appreciate that.
Thanks a lot, Susan. Good night.
Not them, but them at the end of the night, and then after it's cleaned up, we'll get them, we add that in?
Sure.
You want to say?
Do that.
The signature page. Okay. Mr. Chairman, if you entertain a motion, we've been doing some cleanup on the liaison to the rec group, we've been doing some, just some committee cleanup. So if you'd entertain a motion, I'd like to move that we discharge the Recreation and Master Plan Committee.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any questions about Bertucci's? Looks like we've got...
Two votes? I have no questions about Bertucci's.
Is, am I reading?
Yes.
What's up here, Tom?
So Bertucci's has filed for bankruptcy and they are reforming. And as a result, we need, this is a, ABCC is telling us this is basically a blanket process for all of their locations to reengage.
Do we have a sense of whether the Hingham location will remain in operation? I know they've closed some restaurants in the area.
I believe so. I don't have any, be a thing beyond the request.
Yeah, okay. And the transfer of license, I guess that must just go to the, become an asset of the bankruptcy proceeding.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, DBA Bertucci's Restaurants for a transfer of license as outlined in the letter from the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission dated October 23, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's it.
Do we have to do this other one?
Second vote.
We have to do two identical votes?
No, this is a pledge of collateral.
Oop. I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, DBA Bertucci's Restaurants for a pledge of collateral as outlined in the letter from the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission dated October 23, 2018.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's it.
Do we have to do this other one?
Second vote.
We have to do two identical votes? We have to do two identical votes?
No, this is a pledge of collateral.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from Bertucci's Restaurants LLC, DBA Bertucci's Restaurants for a pledge of collateral as outlined in the letter from the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission dated October 23, 2018.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, got that wrapped up before 10, that's nice. Ladies and gentlemen, I anticipate that we'll be meeting twice next week.
Is that right?
Yes. So we can stay up to speed on the budget process, going through the budgets. We'll have the different department heads in, you can hear from all of them. Before we do that, let's do our reports. Michelle, I want to thank you for the good work you did on the budget with Thomas.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to add?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Okay.
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Counsel?
I actually have one, one thing I'd like to let everybody know about, and that is Lieutenant John Beal, commanding officer of the Coast Guard Cutter Terrill Horn, was part of an effort to rescue two men whose boat sank 115 miles off the coast of Key West, Florida. He brought those men in safely. He was just back, actually fairly recently, from commanding a vessel in Cutter, and he's, he's back out with his Coast Guard shipmates, keeping us all safe. He had a great quote in the paper, though, very unselfish quote, and he said that this new Coast Guard Cutter Terrill Horn is one of the newest fast-response crew cutters in the fleet. The crew responded swiftly to rescue these two men who'd been adrift for three days. The namesake of our cutter, Senior Petty Officer Terrill Horn, left us, left us an extraordinary legacy of quick action and service while at sea, and the crew embodied the spirit of Senior Chief Horn in their actions in rescuing these mariners in distress. Well done.
Thank you. Good work there, Captain. I think he's a captain, even if he's a lieutenant, is that right, Paul? If he's in command of the ship? Sorry about that.
I just have one thing. Today is, today is Giving Tuesday, and something came across my email that just filled me with pride for the town of Hingham. And that is that the, the Hingham Heritage Museum has received an extraordinary gift from the Tully family, and that is that donations to the Heritage Museum, which is just a fabulous place, will be matched by the Tully family up to $25,000. Neil Tully, who recently passed away, was on the board of the Heritage Museum and was just so committed to that, to the museum in so many different ways. And we are extraordinarily grateful to the Tully family and to the continuing work of the Heritage Museum. I know that we all have many opportunities to participate in Giving Tuesday, and I would ask that those of us who haven't, who haven't taken advantage of opportunities, consider the Heritage Museum as, as you, as you look at all your different choices. And again, many, many thanks to the Tully family.
I'm going to have the pleasure of going to the commissioning of the USS Thomas Hudner on Saturday. I'm really looking forward to that. Captain Hudner in the Medal of Honor at the Chosum Reservoir.